Okay, so thank you for joining us on this Monday, January twenty fifth, Virtual Regular Board Meeting. I'm so glad that we were able to do it virtual and not in person, you know, regarding the snow that's coming down. But, but yes, we will start with our call to order. First of all, I'd like to start with the pledge to the flag, and if Dr. Robert McBride, if you'd like to start us, lead us on that.
You bet. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
Amen.
Thank you. All right, Kathy, roll call.
Um, Ives, Shaw?
Here.
Vickers?
Here.
Lewandowski?
Here.
Johnson?
Here.
Lopez Caneva?
Here.
Okay, we will start with resolutions, and we have none. And we will start with our reports. We will start with our students.
Okay, we've got student government up first, and Zach, I think you were gonna kick things off, so why don't you go ahead?
Hi, thank you all for having us here. Um, the topic that I'm gonna be reporting on is more student opinions towards um, the like current schedule changes that we've been having recently. Um, one thing that we made note of was at the, I believe it was in November, when we first started polling kids on like how they felt about going in, and like how they feel about hybrid versus virtual. A lot of people like had made their thumbs up for hybrid, they liked that they were able to get in, and like the current schedule that we had set. Um, but recently, uh, at our last meeting, which I believe was two Wednesdays ago, um, when we polled kids and along with a teacher poll in my psychology class, um, it was, if not very near unanimous of more preferring towards virtual, um, just due to the like constant shifts every two weeks, and um, students just like did a thumbs up for virtual over hybrid. Um, and that's just the consensus that I was able to view within my classrooms along with our student government meeting.
And and I think Victoria, you're gonna kind of amplify and kind of build on that dynamic a little bit, so why don't you go ahead, Victoria?
Yeah, thank you. Um, so, um, obviously, we kind of found this out, and we were al- almost kind of surprised by these unanimous results. So I kind of took it upon myself to try and find out why among other students. And I think that just on that first Thursday, we went back and like this week too, just it's been a lot of overwhelming kind of like taking assessments and taking tests and like T and obviously, which is expected and it makes sense, but I think that just that day one, like having a lot of tests was really stressful for students and kind of cast like a negative shadow on the whole hybrid system that hopefully can kind of be repaired as time goes on. But I mean, from my personal experience, like my favorite class of this year is AP Bio, and like I was really looking forward to being in the lab more, and like my major is a chemistry major, so I really was like really excited to get that experience before I go to school. And I think that when that was kind of lacking a little bit, it was um just kind of frustrating for me, just because I like wanted to be like in person to like have a lot of teacher time and to get to ask questions and to do that, and then it was kind of just like an overwhelming amount of assessments.
Got it, and Francesca, you I think were gonna pick up from there, if I remember correctly?
Yes, I was. Um, first of all, I wanted to thank the school board for making these difficult decisions for us. We know it's definitely not been easy, um, but I just wanted to talk about my personal experience with um, hybrid thus far. And um, going into the building, I think it was uh, last Thursday was my first day back, and I was supposed to have four assessments to take on that first day back. Two unfortunately, two of them had gotten pushed back, but I was walking into the building thinking I was gonna take four, which is overwhelming, and as I sat down in my first two periods to take those assessments, um, I realized that my academic endurance has is not the same as it was um, spring of my sophomore year. Um, it's just stressful to be um, sitting down and trying to take those assessments like we're in person full time. Um, just coming back from the all virtual schedules, so.
Ganese, you were gonna kind of round things out, right?
Exactly, Dr. McBride. So also thank you as well, but I think all in all, what we would like to share with you is that we just need a little bit of reflection and kind of a reorient reorientation of what school is, how to test, um, how to be in school, and I also really appreciate that we do have our SEL lessons and things like that, because you can see that the main stress or we had an activity in my PE class Friday in person, everyone's biggest stress was school. So it kind of felt good that everybody else was stressed too, you know, not not that everybody was stressed, but that we were all feeling the same thing. And also just having that kind of communication with our teachers as well, because I know a lot of students have shared with me um, things going at home, just in home in general, and COVID has just kind of upped it up a lot. So we just wanna reiterate, just a lot of communication, um, really appreciating the SEL and maybe having a little bit more mental health in our work plans and all of our classes, not just PE. Maybe if we got to do a breathing exercise before we took our tests, you know what I'm saying? So I think that would be very beneficial, but all in all, it's been a decent process coming back into school from what we've experienced. So it definitely is good to get back in there, very scary, but all in all, I would say good, just need to work on a few things, but thank you.
And I think it was you, Francesca, who said last Thursday that you felt like you were out of in-person learning shape, uh, which I think a number of us, if if we've ever been out of shape, fitness-wise, we could appreciate. Caitlin, did you want to kind of wrap up the student government report, just with some of the events and things like that, uh, that are going on with student government?
Yeah, so recently, we actually hosted our first trivia night, and kids absolutely loved it. It was super fun. I personally did not get to attend it, but all the other board members said that it was awesome. What we want to try and do in the future is do a trivia night for each grade level, specifically freshmen, we think they would really benefit from doing a trivia night that is just for them and getting to meet other people that are in their grade. We also want to host some kind of blood drive, whether that is on school, um, campus or somewhere else. We're still trying to figure out everything that has to do with that, especially with COVID. And then we also have a spirit week that is coming up, and that'll be the first week of February.
Hey, great. I don't know if there's any board member questions. We've got another student group. Thank you very much, Student Government, for that. Got our Student Equity Action, uh, Student Equity Action Committee that would present just any board member questions. And you know, there's no easy way to do this, other than just unmuting and asking your question.
You know, I have a question.
This Johnson?
Yes, um, I know you you guys were saying that coming back to school for in-person and the assessments. Uh, don't you guys have assessments uh, for remote access? No?
We do, but there's been some uh, debacles or some things that happen on remote testing, so they're trying to make as many in-person tests as we can in school.
I guess what I'm leading to is, do you have similar stressors for remote?
Oh, yeah.
These are debacles, you know, um, for remote testing, that's what I'm asking.
Yes, but I wouldn't say it's to the certain extent, just because when I'm testing at home, I'm at home. So let's say like I cried after a test, I can go cry to my mom, you know, I can't do that at school, you feel what I'm saying? So it's still stressful, but it's like a different type of stress, cuz I've done it before.
Yeah. Okay, anybody else?
Yeah, and I'd just like to say that like, I think it's just kind of stressful, like coming from the end of a remote week where we just finished a lesson, and then going back on like the following Monday or Tuesday, whenever you're there, and taking an assessment and just feeling like there's not a ton of time to like ask your teachers questions or like to have review days, and it just kind of feels like sometimes like if you don't understand something, you have to kind of teach it to yourself, like with that pressure of the assessment coming up. And so I think that that was kind of where some of that disconnect came from.
Yeah, I can, I can build on that a little bit more. Um, so when we're in person and being able to learn, there's a lot of little like hints or tricks or like little questions that we can just ask um, in or during class that make a really big difference as opposed to virtual, because if we have a question that we realize after class, we have to write an entire email and then go through a chain with the teacher to try to figure it out. And the communication is much more difficult to answer a simple question than it would be to just walk up to a teacher um, in the building just to ask a question. So I think that there's a lot more clarity with those simple things that could be cleared up um, at 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 the school than at home, so.
I got you. Anybody else?
I have a question. Um, so Francesca, I love um, the term academic endurance. Um, I think I might steal that from you, just so you know. Um, but I would like to know, just and you don't have to answer this now, but maybe um, for future board meetings, what the school can do and what students think the school can do in order to help build that back up, because you're not gonna go run a marathon um, after one day of training, so just something to think about.
Yeah, I agree with Dr. Shaw. You know, we're just here to help you, and thank you, Zach, Veronica, Francesca, Anise, and Caitlin for, you know, sharing your concerns and everything of going back and going through that stressful and then taking those tests and everything. But yes, anything we can help you in, please let us know.
I think a way that um, we could be helped out is maybe having our teachers get to talk to us, like maybe before we take a test or even have a lesson, cuz the thing that I really miss a lot this year is just the ability to just talk to my teachers. The only reason why I have a relationship with my teachers is cuz I'm at office hours, you know, cuz I need help with my uh, trig. But I don't think if it was for that ability, I wouldn't, I would feel a lot more lonely and a lot more distant with my teachers, as well as my classmates in this new semester too, cuz it's just a whole different class. So just, I think being more engaging or having the opportunity to engage with our peers and our teachers, just maybe five, two minutes before class, you know, something like that would be, I think, helpful in an SEL lesson, you know, before a test or something like that, just to start.
All right. Thank you very much, Student Government. Thank you. Uh, Mrs. Lopez Caneva, do you wanna have um, Student Equity Action? And I believe you, Student Equity Action, you guys are gonna kind of call on each other, so uh, thank you, and just remind uh, board members, this is a group-led, um, our faculty advisors, Mrs. Andrea Cobbett, English Department Chair, Mr. Robert Peach, um, a school counselor. And uh, this was something we began, we were so lucky and fortunate to begin over the summer as our entire nation encountered in a in a different way, in a in a deeper way maybe, uh, equity issues. And I think one of the things that we're the most proud of is a group, a student group that's partnering with us to tackle these. So I will turn it over to Student Equity Action.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Nubia Hernandez, and I will be starting off our presentation for you all. Um, just before we get into our main points, we wanted to give you guys a brief recap on all that we've accomplished in our last semester and our goals for this up and coming semester. Um, in CAC, it's really important for us to celebrate and discuss different cultures and backgrounds. And in order to do that, we do things like celebrating Hispanic Heritage Month, and this year, we set up an ofrenda for Dia de los Muertos specifically for that. Um, LGBTQ plus History Month, and also celebrating and discussing different holidays that took place during December. Um, along with that, we were able to connect with Lockport Police Officers through a police panel and open up some questions to them, and having them give their perspective on different topics that we really wanted to talk about. Along with that, we were also able to meet with our center schools, um, specifically Fairmont Junior High and all of the other ones as well, and that just really opened up a door for them to understand that we're here as a support for them for whatever they need, especially in starting up things like a CAC for them and their schools. Um, we have also pushed a lot of content out on our social media, on Facebook, Twitter, and Instagram, on our Diversify Our Narrative account. We're hoping to have something like that for CAC specifically through the school as well, because it is a great resource for students to learn and for us to connect with our students as well. Um, and finally, for our accomplishments, we really think that we have created a space where students can come, feel open about expressing their emotions and their opinions in a respectful way. And we know this because we've been able to have courageous conversations about the election, January sixth, mental health, and suicide prevention alongside so many other things. We hope to continue all of this in this new semester through celebrating Black History Month, Women's Month, Poetry Month, Asian Pacific Islander Desi American Heritage Month, Jewish American Heritage Month, and so many more. We also hope to have a follow-up police panel to further that connection with our Lockport Police Officers, and again, have a dean panel and hopefully connect with some of our staff members and allow students to help out teachers who may feel lost when it comes to having a conversation about equity, and then also creating some kind of focus group for curriculum and hopefully having student collaborators on there to give their opinion on those things. Thank you for your time, thank you for having us, and I will now pass it over to Alicia Thomas.
Thank you so much. So uh, as Nubia said, my name is Alicia Thomas, and you've wonderfully covered um, all the progress that we've made, all the accomplishments of the all that we're so grateful for, having already accomplished, but there is definitely still some work to be done, so I'm gonna kind of um, frame the picture for you. We know that there are adults in the school who are committed to equity, and many of them are in this meeting, which we are so grateful for. When equity is at the forefront of education, everyone in their respective school community will benefit. While we appreciate the support offered to SEAC Administrative Approval of this organization, starting at all, um, we feel that um, the goal of equity should not be isolated to this student group alone. The goal of advocating for equity, diversity, and inclusion is one that should be actively driven by both students and adults within our school. That being said, we recognize that advancements in equity will happen more easily if we have a staff member devoted to that goal exclusively. So continuing on about the goals that we have and um, the work that still needs to be done, I'm going to hand it off to Zach.
Hi. Sorry, echoed. Um, one of the folk, one of the four areas that we want to focus on is language. Um, that includes making sure students understand the uh, implications and the disciplinary standards set in our school for using hate speech and slurs that can offend other students as well as staff members in our community. Um, and another thing that we want to focus on for language is um, the maybe shift from less focusing on um, dress code callouts to more like uh, calling out students and correcting them when they use a slur or a derogatory form of hate speech, to help better correct their place like placement of the word and help educate them further. Um, one thing that we also want to work on within the classroom is uh, how minority students are spoken to or addressed in comparison uh, with other non-students of color, and just like the general uh, respect and just communication lines. I'm gonna pass it over to Anise.
Hi, so one of our second um, things we want to prove with the school is physical space. So some examples are anything that regards to a political affiliation, so that can be a mask, a sticker, um, anything in the background of your Zoom meeting and how that distracts um, our peers. And some uh, peers have even told us that they feel um, disregarded, um, kind of getting them caught up, you know, feeling very uncomfortable even in online spaces where they don't even have the opportunity to, you know, maybe tell a teacher or comfortable to tell a teacher or a counselor, cuz they just don't know how to do that or how to reach those resources. Um, and just how does that leave our students in their learning environment? And also creating that porter citizenship in our school, online and in person, so I'll pass the next one to Zach.
Uh, in terms of the onboard training, uh, we know that we uh, teachers have gone through their own set of training and that there's a teacher equity group. Um, but we think that we could possibly go further in creating a group that would both take uh, student voices from SEAC as well as faculty members into one group, um, just like a meeting like this, in which we could help better like instead of going from examples online of how to better incorporate into the classroom student experiences and how we can build off of this to create a more welcoming environment. Um, we would hope to be able to do this by like having students uh, simulate problematic conversations and comments and how to strategize to both address them, educate the student, as well as move past them to like create a welcoming environment for all students in the future, as well as now. Um, also, uh, student uh, students attending the training sessions that teachers go through in terms of like sensitivity training, we feel that could best like get us on the same level and um, sense of like what's being taught to teachers and how we could all work it into our classroom. And I'll pass it back to Anise.
Another way to help climate and control is hiring practices. So for example, even starting within our own school and making students feel comfortable enough to want to teach and come back. Um, you know, specifically minority students such as myself that want to have that opportunity and feel like they're welcomed at Lockport, regardless of the space, but having a great positive culture and community and climate where they feel welcome to come back. Another way is having um, mandatory teaching tolerance, especially for teachers who are already teaching and people who are being newly hired. Um, hiring from all different colleges and backgrounds, for example, in HBCU like Howard, you can get a teacher from there as well. Um, just improving the culture, it just making students and staff feeling welcome regardless of the space. And um, uh, I think that's it for that part. And back to Alicia.
Thank you so much. So we've proposed quite a few um, goals that we have, and they may seem ambitious, but um, if there's anything that this group believes in, it's that we need to be courageous and we have to become comfortable with being uncomfortable. And so what we're gonna leave you with is equity means ensuring that all students are given the equal opportunity to learn at a high level and receive an optimal education experience. And I think we can all agree that we all have the common goal of ensuring that all LTHS students have this educational equity. But in order to realize the goal of equity, we feel that LTHS should hire an equity officer. We think such a position would be the most beneficial course of action to take, so plans for increasing equity programs are implemented effectively and efficiently. Um, there are Illinois school districts who have equity officers, including one in which Dr. McBride previously worked, District 204. And we think a wonderful long-term goal to set, this is very, very long-term, but um, for LTHS to have the goal of perhaps having an office of equity such as that seen within Chicago Public Schools. Again, we know these goals sound ambitious, but again, we have to become comfortable with being uncomfortable because ultimately, these goals are going to benefit our school community in such a positive way.
And we really want to say thank you for you all for having teacher equity training, the four A workshop with culture and climate, the Capitol Hill message, which was very empowering, even allowing this club to be founded and initiated speaks volumes. Um, our support with our higher administration, even you guys allowing us to come to this meeting and speak. Um, our support with our higher administration, even you guys allowing us to come to this meeting and speak with you all. And also having the teachers with the youth equity stewardship called yes. And we just have, um, just a couple of questions for you guys. And one of our questions is how do you think equity can support the district's goals? Um, what are some ideas that the school board has thought regarding equity? And what are we all trying to do and accomplish within this school year and future school years?
And I'll turn that back over to Mrs. Lopez Caniva if you want to, if there are board members who want to respond or. You know, just think about those, those questions. So I'll kind of turn the agenda back over to you, Mrs. Lopez Caniva.
Well, thank you first of all for the student equity action committee to, you know, to come to our virtual meeting here and express all your goals and everything. And yes, like you said, very ambitious goals, but I, I know they can be fulfilled with time and, and, um. But yes, we will definitely take into consideration all of those concerns that you have and everything that you want. And we want you to be, um. Very proactive in this and, and I, I really compliment each and every one of you to come forward and, you know, express your concerns and. Yes, even when you guys were talking, I think at the Teacher Institute Day, January fourth, I mean, I was very impressed. I was amazed. How all of you came forward and talked about your feelings and everything that was going on. And it was like a wow moment for all of us. Um, I don't know if Ms. Johnson or, or Ms. Bicus wants to collaborate anymore on this.
Um. I agree with you guys that a lot of this, uh, this is a new trend with a lot of districts. I've been watching it. For diversity, inclusion officer, equity, inclusion officer. Fact, I was going to raise the question to, uh, Dr. McBride, if we can look into that for us. A permanent staff position, because I think it's greatly needed. And that way. The, um. The employee equity action team and you guys can both. Be one person to, uh, bring you two together. Okay. Now, my question to you is, what do you think about a parent equity action group?
Well, Ms. Lorraine Johnson, we already have one. But if you have any members, please feel free to email Dr. McBride or myself. I will be very excited to introduce them and have them on the committee.
Well, we need to have more people represented on that group is the, is why I'm raising it, you know? We do have a small group, but we need more representative. You know, we got Alicia, we got, is it Novena? We got Zach. We got a lot of people, but. We need to have more parents so that they could understand where you guys are coming from. I, I got, I got you. So.
Well, right now we have our parents on it and we have a couple of other parents. Um, but if you have any other parents that you know, I would invite them ASAP or Dr. McBride. And we are reaching out as well. So it is in the works.
Okay. Thank you.
I'm like, you're purring. Oh, sorry. Go ahead.
I'll say one last thing. Um, one thing I wrote down, which I thought maybe. A possibility is, do you guys meet with the, uh, adult equity action team?
No, we do not.
Maybe once, maybe once a month, once a quarter, I don't know the frequency. Something to think about, uh, Dr. McBride, getting the two together, because that's something you did express. It's the two of you coming together. Cause you guys have a lot of great ideas. So, you know, so I'm done.
All right. Thank you again. Okay, you are a student government or student equity. You are welcome to stay or you may leave our meeting because we know how busy you are. And we don't want to add more stress to you. All right, uh, switching it over then to AFT report, Ms. Karen Cooper.
All right. Good, good evening, everybody. I always get the honor of following up such awesome students. Um. It's interesting to hear their perspective, um, on coming in the building. I know that, uh, we have been excited. I think everybody I've talked to is excited to see kids in the building as then we, it turns over to, like, what was the academic endurance? Cause it's a shift for us as we're working through everything. Um, and it's, the challenges come back up. The concerns then get brought back up, but it is exciting to have the kids in the building. Um. It's the, you know, the, there it is, the increase in absenteeism that it makes it tougher. It's the safety concerns that exist out there that, that are always at the back of everybody's mind. Um, the assistance and connection time is nice to have that built in now. Um, I'm, I'm seeing it, the increase in absenteeism, at least it's giving an opportunity to maybe work with the kids that can't be there when we're hybrid. So it's kind of nice to have that out there. Uh, what was I thinking? Oh, sorry. And I do want to, and thankfully the one thing that's been very impressive is how safety conscientious our school has been. Meanwhile, we've been in meetings where other schools are present. Um, I'm very proud of the types of reports that we can give. About how safety conscientious and supportive the district has been to all the staff members. Uh, I am looking forward to, and I'm sure that a lot of others are looking forward to when. Will County maybe gets a little organized and will feel a little bit better because we're vaccinated as essential workers. I'm. I'm looking forward to it. So it'll be, it'll feel a lot better coming into the building, I think, when people can start to get vaccinated. So as we look for the rest of the semester, we really kind of have two areas of focus. Um, we've lost so many of our events that we've had in the past. We are just hopeful that we are not going to have to lose. The ability to celebrate retirees. So we're diligently looking for a way that we can pull that off. And then of course, the last thing is that we have begun meeting with administration to discuss the terms of the certified staff collective bargaining agreement. That expires at the end of the year and eventually we'll work on the non-certified agreement. But hopefully with this early start and the good collaborative conversations that will arrive in an agreement that promotes, maintains and rewards excellence in education. In a timely fashion. So we've really had some, some good conversations and I, I think in the end things will, it'll be good. Thank you.
No, thank you. All right, ISB Governing Board Report. Ms. Johnson.
Um, if you've got, uh, the ISAB is hosting their legislative breakfast, uh, virtually. Again, this year, well, it wasn't virtual last year, but this year it's going to be virtually. So I hope all the, uh, school board members have signed up to attend that. I think it, um. I have really enjoyed it. This is where you can see your representatives and representatives of other districts. Do you understand where they're coming from? Especially since there's a lot of, uh, Senate bills and House bills that impact. The school board. And, uh, if you have a input, this is where you can give input to them. Uh, what I think we need to do though is understand who's on the very, on the, uh, education committee with legislators. So that way, those people we can directly talk to, if there's a bill coming up, just like we just had this, a House Bill twenty one seventy. Which Dr. McBride will talk about later. Um, you know, I followed it when I saw it. But, um, we need to understand those things that are coming, especially if there's a bill that has, uh. What is it? Um. Mandates that are not funded, unfunded mandates, that's the term, you know, that really impacts us. So that's why we need to stay on top of what's going on. So, um, that's all I have, uh, Madam President.
Okay. All right. Well, thank you. And if anyone is interested in attending that, which is going to be Saturday, February thirteenth, just, uh, contact, uh, Kathy Maxwell. Okay. Thank you, Luan. Okay, um, Foundation Board Report. I don't think Mr. Ives is here, but I don't know if, um. If Dr. McBride, would you want to share anything or our. Or our new, um, foundation director?
Sure. I, I would just say Kate Dean is, is up and running. She's, um, done a great job in so many different ways. Uh, the first stage that she's doing is February, the February Foundation Board Meeting by the bylaws is a restructuring, kind of a. Annual reorganizing meeting confirming members, um. Confirming sort of the schedule for the year and confirming leadership positions. So Kate Dean's working on that. Uh, we have three membership, uh, positions that are open right now and Kate is working on filling those with some new community members, which is very exciting. Uh, also, um, even though we're, we're limited, we quickly entered tier one. Um, she's been able to, to start working in the community to make some social connections. Uh, it was just recently at the opening of a new restaurant and as she said, she came home with, you know, tons of business cards. Um, working on the golf outing for the foundation and also possibly working on a partnership, uh, with an organization. Called Feed My Starving Children. Uh, so those are just a few things Kate Dean is doing in addition to creating a, uh, foundation website as well.
Okay. All right. Thank you so much. All right. Okay. Legislative report.
All right. I would concur with Mrs. Johnson that, uh, a board member should attend, uh, the legislative breakfast. Many legislators, because it has been a hot lame duck session in Springfield, probably one of the most productive. Um, sessions in terms of producing things. That's also created some frustration in the state at times with how quickly some things. Ha- have moved along in, in the state house, but, um. You can see in my report, I'll highlight a few things that I think are particularly important for the board. I mentioned. The change in leadership in terms of Speaker of the House position. The educational omnibus bill that Mrs. Johnson referred to, that's House Bill twenty one seventy. It has passed the House and the Senate. It is awaiting signature, which is expected by Governor Pritzker. A few things to highlight, uh, in particular for the board. There is a change in graduation requirements that we will have to do some planning in particular. Um, a requirement of three years of laboratory science. Um, many of our students take three years of science and not all of our students take science classes that are laboratory classes. And the state has a distinction of what qualifies. Some of our students, we'll talk a little bit later on, take only two years of science, which we require as a district. Also, um, a requirement, this begins in twenty twenty four, a requirement also in twenty twenty four. That students are mandated to take two years of world language. So we'll have to study the possible impact of that change. In graduation requirements. Um, there's been a relook at evidence-based funding. And part of that relook is, um, a change, a little bit of change in the statutory minimum of funding for schools. It's going to committee, but also, uh, tying that evidence-based funding to efforts by school districts to eliminate structural racism. Both of those are somewhat unclear in terms of what they mean. There was a bill, uh, part of the bill, it's been removed to extend the school year. Uh, fifteen days for the next three years, uh, to a hundred ninety-one school days that was removed. But it's gone to a committee that will report on December thirty first, twenty twenty one. Also a bill to, uh, have more inclusive, uh, US history curriculum. Uh, ensuring, uh, that, that US history curriculum is as inclusive, uh, and as accurate as possible. Also, that bill includes, um, computer science directs us and the state to review. Um, what we require in terms of computer science that we offer. And then finally minority student recruitment into teaching positions. Incentivizing, uh, minority students to go into the profession of, of, of teaching like our students mentioned earlier. Um, the police criminal justice and reform bill, House Bill thirty six fifty three. Uh, in the state has, has been quite a bit of conversation, but specifically there was a bill introduced and withdrawn. To eliminate the school resource officer position, uh, across the state. Uh, that was withdrawn and did not make it into, uh, final legislation. And then finally, uh, there's quite a bit going on with, uh, ESSER grant and ESSER grant is the equivalent of CARES money. For school districts. Uh, we have an anticipation of what kind of federal ESSER grant monies we can anticipate. Uh, many are advising the lobbying groups that we work with, uh, to, to be cautious with that money. And perhaps wait until we spend that money until we see what happens with evidence-based funding. There is somewhat of a concern that the state will take whatever evidence-based funding that you would have as a district. We have three point four million dollars annually and reduce that by the, um, amount of ESSER funding that you received. Uh, so we want to see how that plays out. Finally, um, before this board meeting, we had a breakthrough. Uh, both in the, in, in Will County, we entered tier one and with the IHSA and the state, uh, winter sports are back on. Uh, we had practice this afternoon, so we're very excited. And also the state released a return to play guideline. That, that gives a pathway for all of our sports. We hope to be able to play this year. So, uh, we're very excited about that. We're excited to have winter sports back on. Uh, we hope we keep on going in that direction in our zip codes. The positivity rate as of today is three point six percent, um, which is, is, is a dramatic low. Uh, in comparison to, to where we've been. Uh, finally, in my superintendent report coming up, I'll talk a little bit about the state and vaccination. That is my report. If there's any board questions on legislation.
Oh, thank you. You're very thorough on that. Okay, notices and communication, Dr. Shaw. Uh, the only thing we have in communications is a note of thanks from board member Dick Ives, uh, that was sent to the administration as well as. Board of Education regarding a donation to Salem Education Teachers Fund that was made in memory of Mr. Ives' mother, who was also an educator for many years. And that is all. All right. Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Shaw. All right. And there you have in your board packet, the Freedom of Information requests that were fulfilled. Or, and one was, I believe denied, but yes. And then public comments on agenda topics. All right. A designated portion of the board meeting is set aside to hear comments on topics listed on the agenda. A person wishing to speak must sign in and provide all information requested on the sign-in sheet, including the agenda item they will be addressing. The board president will call speakers up by name, announcing their time to comment. A time limit of five minutes per speaker, per agenda topic will be imposed. The purpose of requesting such information on the sign-in sheet is to obtain the correct spelling of the name of the speaker and contact information. Which will be used for any necessary board follow-up. In my understanding, there is none.
Uh, there is no public comment on agenda items, uh, Mrs. Lopez Caniva.
Okay, thank you. All right. Next, we'll move it on to the approval items. Just need a motion for the regular, uh, to approve the regular meeting. It's December twenty first, twenty twenty. Is there a motion?
I'll make that motion. I'm sorry, I second it.
Okay, so it's been motioned by Dr. Shaw and seconded by, was it Mr. Lewandowski?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Okay, just need a. Just need a vocal, a roll call for that. Ms. Maxwell.
Johnson?
Yes.
Lewandowski?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Bicus?
Yes.
Lopez Caniva.
Uh, yes. All right, I made the motion. I'm sorry, disconnected. I made the motion to approve that, uh, closed session, meeting minutes of December twenty first, twenty twenty. Is there a second?
I'll second it, Anne.
Okay. It's been motioned by Lopez Caniva and seconded by Ms. Lisa Bicus. All right, roll call.
Lewandowski?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Bicus?
Yes.
Ives? Lopez Caniva?
Yes. All right. Next, I need approval of the treasurer's report for December twenty twenty.
I'll make the motion, Anne. Second, Shaw.
All right, it's been motioned by Bicus and seconded by Dr. Shaw to approve the treasurer's report for December twenty twenty. Are there any questions? Okay, hearing none. Roll call.
Johnson?
Oh, yes. You say it out every day in there.
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Lewandowski?
Yes.
Ives? Ms. Caniva?
Yes. All right, moving, we'll take it back to Dr. Robert McBride, um, superintendent report.
All right. Thank you, Mrs. Lopez Caniva. Uh, we returned to school, uh, in person on Thursday, January twenty first. And as I'm always fond of saying, or Mrs. Janine Wheeler says, we have a five-day-a-week model of, of school, but we began. Uh, as board members know, uh, school after the winter break in remote where COVID was relatively high in the community. And we're very glad that on the twenty first, it coincided walking back into the building with students that we were ecstatic to see. And I'll let Dr. Green and Dr. Green really report on. And I'll let Dr. Green and Dr. Green really report on that. With with very low COVID numbers, so we're in a very, very good place uh right now. Leading up to that return to in-person learning, just I want to share with board members in my report a few things that we did to engage our community. We released a thought exchange survey to try to capture what questions our parents still have, and I'm going to focus in on that. We offered two just outstanding uh webinars led by Lori Cristofaro, uh Jennifer Webberay, assisted by Jeanine Wheeler and Eric Slager, but I really just have to, i- if you had a chance to see those or get on our YouTube channel. But just some amazing pros, about four hundred viewers. But Tammy Gallagher, Gail Wyrock, Angie Pumpilio, Cara Coyle, Bridget LaPorte, Monica Case, Kayla Marbach, Kathy Fields, Beth Taco, just absolute pros, really demonstrating for parents. And we got great feedback of exactly how they teach when students are at home in hybrid. You know, as we say, school is open five days a week, although we're, you know, not always uh all together. Just wanted to maybe, uh, and then finally, we provided two videos um just uh last Friday. Uh, and and Dr. Green and and Dr. Green, one set of videos to students and then another set of videos uh featuring uh Mrs. Margot Singletary, uh, our history, uh, our social studies department chair, and one of her students of how they work when they're 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 doing at-home learning. So we really tried to uh educate our parents. Want to highlight a few of the key questions from our thought exchange um survey and just use my report maybe to to answer those, not only for board members, but for for some of our uh public at home. One question was, and we get this question repeatedly, why doesn't Lockport livestream classes? And I, we, that was something that was built into our design last summer and I, and now we actually have a research base in terms of talking to um other school districts that are live streaming. And this is not a criticism of what what they're doing. But what we have found is that when we're both live streaming and we have students in front of us, that that undercuts an in-person model. In essence, the live stream in many districts that we've talked to have found that it has reduced attendance because in essence, students can always livestream at home in into their class. Also, we've made a commitment to our teachers being focused on the students in front of them rather than having students who have come to school and students in a computer that they have to attend to at the same time. That's both a focus on education and that's a focus on on safety as well. So it really comes down to engagement and it comes down to to attendance. We believe in an in-person model and we're in hybrid and we want to do everything we can to support that. What we're hearing is that live streaming uh is not as supportive. It contributes to a lack of attendance. Are you taking additional precautions to stop the spread of COVID? We are taking every precaution. We've had a lot of success. Our metrics, you know, even now, um, are are solid and steady and we have only had one known case this whole year, a person-to-person transmission of COVID. So all the precautions we're taking, we believe, are working. Uh, the best precaution, as Mrs. Cooper um suggested, is vaccination. And we are ecstatic that we have entered one B. But uh we are somewhat stymied and frustrated and certainly I can speak on behalf of my uh feeder superintendent colleagues that it is very difficult to come by vaccine, vac- vaccine doses. Uh, Will County um has not received shipments in the past two weeks of vaccine doses. Uh, we are in one B, but Mr. Kandari and our certified school nurse Carly Maroney did submit a plan to Will County Public Health. We're ready to go. However, some of the logistics, the delivery and getting uh vaccines actually in arms has has been a stumbling block. I'm working with the seven feeder districts to perhaps combine our efforts as we've seen in places like Lake County, so stay tuned. We sure hope that February is vaccination month for our educators, who are absolutely essential workers. We had the question of why is daily dismissal time at twelve fifty? Uh, one of the things that we've learned is the absolute importance of, and you heard it from our students tonight, setting time aside in the afternoon in this sort of hybrid and electronic world to provide assistance for our students. So we provide that assistance uh in the afternoon. Uh, why are students allowed to have a snack or or eat lunch when we're in person? Uh, one, it would be very difficult when we're in person to go from seven AM to one o'clock without eating at all. And there's a lot of evidence, both from our own experience first semester and Harvard School of Public Health, Johns Hopkins University, that if done properly with physical distancing, masking, when not eating, not eating for long periods of time, taking about ten minutes to have a snack or a quick lunch, that uh this can be done safely for everyone involved. We have a great partnership with Quest that will, food services that we'll talk about later, um, that I also think has created uh a situation with grab-and-go lunches, prepackaged uh food and because of the school lunch program, no money, no lines have to uh take place. Uh, so pretty proud that we're offering food and sustenance to every student. When will we, will we do saliva testing, COVID saliva testing? This is something Mr. Kandari and I have researched and Mrs. Caroy extensively. And we have determined at least this point that we would not do uh binax testing or saliva testing. And the primary reason why is because the help that we need is avoiding quarantine. But in all cases, none of the tests that we would be authorized to give as a school district can allow a student to come back if that student has been uh exposed or has COVID symptoms or is COVID positive. Uh, they would still have to get a confirmatory test, a PCR test. So we really would not get get help on um on keeping students out of quarantine. Wh- why are we going um two weeks on in in person, hybrid, two weeks um remote? We're doing that exactly because what we learned first semester is how disruptive quarantine procedures for students who are um exposed to COVID can be. On November tenth, right before we went remote, we had six hundred students, uh, almost twenty percent of our student population exposed to COVID and on a fourteen-day quarantine. So we believe going two weeks in person, two weeks remote can support an in-person model with the quarantine that we have to uh face. And then finally, is Lockport Township, uh District Two-O-Five advocating for sports? We've been doing that through our conference. Uh, we've been doing that um, you know, through every means that we can. And we're glad that we've made a a breakthrough. There's been a lot of frustration with with uh the Illinois Department of Public He- uh Health and with the state. Um, we think that sports are one of the most successful things that we've been able to handle in the COVID era and we're glad to see that sports are back on. Uh, one last thing for board members, as you know, we took a precautionary move with weather. I don't know what the conditions are outside, but we did switch our Wednesday um remote learning shortened schedule to tomorrow and our Tuesday schedule to Wednesday, just to make sure we don't lose an in-person day. So let me pause there and take any board member questions.
Dr. McBride, I don't have any uh questions. I just have a comment. Um, the town hall I watched uh today at five o'clock, it was about an hour and ten fifteen minutes. It was fantastic. I would just encourage uh more parents and to get online to watch that. If we could push that out again, uh, to have everyone have a greater understanding of all the time and talent that the administration and the teachers put together, that would be great. It was fantastic to watch, so they did a nice job.
Yeah, that's a great suggestion, Mrs. Bickus. Uh, Jeanine Wheeler and I just talked this morning of sort of boomeranging some of those videos, especially via social media, Facebook, Twitter and Instagram, posting them there just to to come back around to them, because all of you know how it is. You might get an email and you didn't see the video last week, but then you get another email and you see it again and it's so helpful. That's a great suggestion.
All right, thank you, Dr. McBride. All right, any other questions for him? All right. Forward. All right, we're moving on to the consent agenda items. I just need a motion to approve the consent agenda items number two to number six.
So moved. Second, Shaw.
All right, been motioned by Ms. Bickus and seconded by Dr. Shaw to approve the consent agenda items number two to are there any questions? Okay, hearing none. Roll call.
Shaw?
Yes.
Lewandowski?
Yes.
Bickus?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Lopez Caniva?
Uh, yes. Okay, then moving on to our action consideration, just need a a motion to approve the memorandum of understanding with DLA for the technology department and media center renovations.
So moved, Shaw.
And I can second that.
Okay.
All right, are there any questions, comments? I'm really looking forward to that whole renovation after, I believe, after looking at that whole space. Okay, roll call.
Bickus?
Yes.
Lewandowski?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Lopez Caniva?
Yes. Okay, next we have the approval for the student fee schedule for the year twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two.
Ms. Lopez?
I'm sorry.
I had a question.
Sure.
When we, uh, Dr. McBride, when we look at that renovation, I know you said something about podcasts and stuff like that. At one point, uh, during my tenure as a school board member, we talked about like a radio station or news channel kind of thing at the school. Is that something that could be considered in that area? Just a question.
You're you're right on it, Mrs. Johnson. Uh, we do have a video club. It's 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 been tough for them to do their work for for two reasons. One, the room that they use, that's uh Mrs. Lopez Caniva, Mr. Ives and uh Mrs. Dr. Shaw saw that. We would, in the architectural plan that is in your board packet, there would be a studio for podcasting, but then also a larger room that would be for video. And so one vision is certainly for video creation, um, you know, video sharing. Uh, we have Eric Slager's great talents, but maybe even, and Jeff Krone, both outstanding people in the East Campus MIS. But also maybe a vision one day where we're actually teaching media classes, which as you know, given this platform, probably the fastest growing um job pathway i- in in the country, if not in the world right now. So that, we we do have a dedicated room in that architectural plan for video specifically.
What I was referring to is perhaps uh radio broadcasting and our uh a television station, just some thoughts. When they put the uh e- electric equipment in, maybe they can take that into into man, so.
I- I, no, absolutely, that, we have that as part of that act, exactly what you're talking about as part of that architectural plan. And the amazing thing is if I took some of the board members to schools that I've worked at where they have broadcasting studios, they're huge as spaces because at least at that time, the equipment was so large. Um, many of you know that uh a lot of times the equipment now can fit in the palm of our hand. Um, I'm always amazed when news crews come out and I always say, wh- where's the cameras and things like that, so. But that is part of the plan, exactly what you're talking about, Mrs. Johnson.
Okay, all right, thank you. All right, next we have um the student fee schedule for school year twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two. I just need a motion.
So moved, Shaw.
I'll second it.
Okay, it's been motioned by Dr. Shaw and seconded by Ms. uh Bickus. Are there any questions?
If I could just make one comment too, Ms. Lopez Caniva, um, you know, this is the twelfth year in a row that those fees are frozen. So I think that's that that's notable. It just speaks to the financial, you know, stewardship of the district that we're keeping those at a historic level, you know, not not raising those. Uh, that's the twelfth year, so just an important footnote. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for bringing that that comment out. All right, yes. Okay, roll call.
Shaw?
Yes.
Bickus?
Yes.
Lewandowski?
Yes.
Johnson? Johnson? Luanne Johnson?
Yeah.
Thank you. Lopez Caniva?
Yes. Okay, next we have the action consideration approval extension of Quest Food Management Service contract. Just need a motion for that.
So moved. Second.
It's been motioned by Ms. Bickus and seconded by Dr. Shaw. Are there any questions or comments to this?
I just want to know what a porter meal is.
Uh, Mr. Thompson or Mrs. Caroy, would you like to uh describe a porter meal? It does not come with like a toy or a free ice cream ticket. I will assure you of that. A porter meal is basically the the prepackaged kind of food along the lines of the uh school lunch program, which has to have particular things in it, such as a vegetable, a main. You know, a lot of times it's no fried food, no pizza um in the school lunch. Mrs. Caroy, you want to show what a porter meal is?
Uh, yeah, that's, you you hit it right on. I mean, that's just a the the regular meal of the day. It's just a fun name.
It's just a fun name, yeah, it is. Well, thank you.
Thank you for that. Okay. All right, roll call.
Lewandowski?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Bickus?
Yes.
Lopez Caniva?
Yes. Okay, moving on to to the closed session. Other action item is a closed session meeting minutes available to the public and closed session destruction of verbatim audio recordings. Just need a motion for that.
So moved. Second, Shaw.
Okay, it's been motioned by Ms. Bickus and seconded by Dr. Shaw. Okay, are there any questions on these meeting minutes? Now, are these meeting minutes going to be destroyed then or just open to the public? How does that, Dr. McBride?
You in essence, Mrs. Lopez Caniva, um, they they'll be open, but then also that you just approve the timeline for them to be destroyed. So those verbatim recordings are eventually, uh, because we do actually keep, as you know, uh, paper copy of closed session minutes, that's the permanent record. Um, the audio recordings are eventually destroyed. So you just approve the timeline for that.
Okay, all right, thank you. All right, roll call.
Johnson?
Yes.
Lewandowski?
I say destroy them, so I don't know if that's a no or not.
Okay, um, Shaw?
Yes.
Bickus?
Yes.
Lopez Caniva?
Yes. Okay, moving on then to press one oh six, the first reading. Dr. McBride?
Okay, hey, I'm gonna, please just stop me. I'm gonna go into presentation mode so that you can see the slides and move relatively quickly. Uh, I worked on this, Stephanie Caroy's office worked on this and Lori Cristofaro's office worked on this. Uh, there are very few changes for the number of slides that I will show you. And and really, y- you might see a a lot of slides, but that's, that is just to give you an idea of what policies uh had some revisions in terms of um footnote changes and 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 things like that, so. Uh, Mrs. Cristofaro, can you see my screen? Can you see the slides right now?
Yes, we can, Bob. This is telling. Yes, we can.
Okay, thanks, Mr. Kandari. Uh, so this is the first reading, press one oh six. Most of these, like the superintendent, this was, uh, the policy was unchanged. Uh, this this really just some legal references that spoke to the endorsement requirements, the license requirements. It did not change any policy. Uh, this is policy three forty regarding uh the superintendent. Policy four ten, also this is fiscal and business management, no changes as well. Um, it just added some uh uh information about permanently transferring money and the timeline related to that. Um, it just added some, uh, uh, information about permanently transferring money and the timeline related to that. Four forty-five as well, credit cards and procurement cards. Only the cross-references and, and legal footnotes were changed. The policy was not changed, so it does not require, require a, a board vote. Accounting and audits, four colon eighty and four colon ninety go together. Uh, because I'm gonna jump to four colon ninety, both were changed to introduce something called a fiduciary account. I'm gonna switch to four ninety. We run, um, student activity funds. We do not have any fiduciary, uh, funds that we keep as a district. But in essence, what four colon eighty and four colon ninety introduce is the possibility of a fiduciary fund. Uh, right now, talking to Mrs. Kroy, we don't have a plan to open fiduciary funds. We believe that our student activity accounts, as they are, with district officials overseeing them, um, give us a great deal of locus control over funds moving through those kind of activity accounts. But to be in keeping with press, we thought there might be someday, uh, need to establish a fiduciary fund. And so we would make this policy change to come in line with what press is suggesting. And at any point, please just slow me down if, uh, and just unmute and ask a question if, um, if you need to, okay?
Dr. McBride, this is Lisa Vickers.
Go right ahead.
What is the definition of a fiduciary account?
Uh, Mrs. Kroy, you want to define, you'll, you'll give a much more proper definition of a fiduciary account than I probably will.
Yeah, the primary difference is, um, is really our control. So, um, if we were running, we have a foundation for this purpose, but if we were running, um, uh, scholarships, like if we were managing a scholarship donation, um, that we would not have control over, but we would be holding the money and that would be considered a fiduciary fund. Um, because our foundation deals with that, we don't have anything like that. But, um, in that case, we would be not, we would not be the ones determining the, who receives the donations and, or, you know, where, where the donations came from, who receives the scholarships, that kind of thing. The difference between what we do have, the student activity funds, are, we are involved in that. Our coaches, our athletic director, activities director are involved in how those funds are raised through fundraisers of, with students as well as, um, you know, how it's spent.
Thank you, Stephanie.
Sure.
Okay. Um, four colon one fifty, this is facility management. Um, the footnotes were updated. Uh, this just, you know, uh, updates some, um, some updates from Illinois Department of Labor. These are the references and footnotes, so no change again, uh, to the policy. This is just some of the case history supporting, uh, the policy. Uh, convicted child sex offender, no change to the policy, but as we've talked about in previous, um, policy revisions, there's been quite a bit of change. Um, this gets to cross-referencing footnotes and legal references. It, it confirms in essence in that case law, the, uh, background check that we used with, uh, fingerprinting of individuals. And ISBE notifying me as the superintendent, it, it confirms the legal standing of us to do that. Uh, hiring process and criteria, uh, this is a cross-reference of the policy we just saw. Um, the policy has not changed. The footnotes again reference, uh, building in case law about convicted sex offender screening and notifications. Teacher qualifications, some updated, uh, footnotes specifically to driver education and changes that have happened in the state, but the policy itself remains unchanged. Um, employment, uh, at will, compensation and assignment, again, temporary employees, this, this policy wasn't changed. Footnotes were updated. Uh, school accountability, uh, the policy was unchanged, some footnotes. Uh, does not require, um, annual state assessment if ISBE receives a waiver from the Department of Education. That's just a footnote that confirms, um, that, that reality. School year calendar and date, unchanged pal, uh, policy, but the legal references and cross-references were updated because of the pandemic. We've had to do so much calendar work. We're even, I haven't even submitted to the board a calendar yet because so much is uncertain, even still for next year. So when they, we're working on the calendar, hope to have one to you in February. Uh, curriculum development, no change in, in policy, just the footnotes were up, updated, uh, to bring in some of the case law about e-learning days, Title IX's application, uh, continuous improvement, uh, updates. Uh, grading and promotion, again, no change in this policy. Footnotes were updated to reflect, uh, state assessments are not required if the US Department of Education waives those. There's been quite a bit of discussion about that in cases, uh, across the country, especially this year. The US Department of Education mandates, um, state assessments as part of the No Child Left Behind Act. And now the Every Student Succeeds Act, which was an update of that. Graduation requirements, this policy was updated, so this would be a policy that the board would, would have to, uh, approve. It updated the footnotes, um, and it really rolled in so many of the things that you have heard and the flexibility with graduation requirements that we've received, uh, under, um, and changes under, um, this pandemic that we're in. Uh, we have a FAFSA form, it updated something called the seal of biliteracy. Um, I don't know, uh, Mrs. Christopher, is there anything that you want to weigh in with this graduation requirement?
I think you've covered it and I'm glad to see my mic's working now.
Okay, great, thank you. Uh, so very minor change that just brings us in alignment will be probably changing six colon three hundred based on, uh, you know, the House bill, the omnibus education bill. Uh, this policy, press one oh six is a little bit behind that, so. Um, six colon, uh, uh, three ten, uh, the, the policy legal references have been, uh, updated relating to course substitutions for registering for apprenticeship programs. This is in essence makes room for students to do traditional apprenticeship programs. Um, it, it's part of some of the waivers that we can do as a district to allow students to go to Wilco or do career preparation, vocational preparation. And in this case, uh, apprenticeship also counts as a type of vocational preparation. For example, the state allows us to waive the PE requirement if a student cannot work into her or his schedule to get vocational training. Apprenticeship with trade unions comes under that, uh, as well. Um, high school graduation credit, uh, for students in grade seven or nine. Basically, this updates to press, opening up high school classes if, under certain conditions, we retain the decision-making about whether or not we can open that up. But it allows us to open that up and count as an eighth grader who might be taking a class with us to count as part of their high school graduation requirements in, in the state. High school credit for proficiency, no, no change here, just, this is, uh, legal references and, and updates. Uh, modifying things in graduation requirements because of a public emergency. So no real change, no change in the policy that board members have to vote on. Uh, student testing and assessment program, this was a, a very small change. There are changes, uh, the state, as you know, I know Mrs. Johnson was very fond of the ACT and we went from the ACT to PARC to SAT. So rather than having a board policy that we have to six colon three forty every time the state changes its assessment method and we have to change our policy, it simply states, uh, what you're, you would be voting on and approving that we will follow whatever instrument the state is using at the time.
Right.
Uh, is seven colon one hundred, no change to health, eye, dental examinations. Um, this just, you know, kind of, uh, brings in, uh, there's some updates, uh, is small updates that you would be voting on for continuous improvement, prohibiting a school from withholding a child's report card during a school year when the governor has declared a disaster. You might recall last spring, and we'll mention a little bit later in this presentation, uh, the state directed us not to fail students. Now, we had to interpret that at the high school level, but, uh, seven colon one hundred, uh, gets, gets into that. Search and seizure, seven colon one forty, just legal references, there's always case law in search and seizure. Extracurricular, uh, activities, this policy and footnotes, they were updated in response to a five-year review. The main change in here is allowing a registered nurse, as well as a physician and a physician assistant, to sign off on the fitness of a student to participate in athletics. That is it. Uh, student fundraising activities, the policy was updated, uh, for minor, minor changes. You saw in four colon ninety, the minor changes are student activity funds and fiduciary funds. We don't have fiduciary funds. Uh, that's it. Those are the policies. I know I went through that very quickly. Uh, but I am, I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have. That was sort of a lightning round. But in essence, very, very few changes here. I'm gonna pull out a presentation mode and then answer any board questions you might have. And we would bring only to board members next month, only the policies that are changed and require your vote.
All right, thank you, Dr. McBride. Are there any questions? Okay. Well, here we go. We don't need a roll call for this, right? It's just our first, this is our first reading.
That is correct.
Okay, all right, thank you. All right. Uh, public comments not on agenda. A designated portion of the board meeting is set aside to hear comments on topics not listed on the agenda. A person wishing to speak must sign in and provide all information requested on the sign-in sheet, including the topic they will be addressing. The board president will call speakers up by name, announcing their time to comment. A time limit of five minutes per speaker per topic will be imposed. The purpose of requesting such information on the sign-in sheet is to, um, let's see. Of this, is to obtain the correct spelling of the name of the speaker and contact information, which will be used for any necessary board follow-up. In my understanding, Dr. McBride, there was one person?
We do, and just for anybody on the live stream who's a member of the public, on these virtual meetings, uh, we ask for public participation that, uh, members of the public, email, um, schoolboard@lths.org. Uh, by six PM before the board meeting, we received a email, um, from, uh, Ms. Catherine Young. She is an LTHS parent. I'll go ahead and read into the record her, um, email. Good evening, Dr. McBride and LTHS school board members. Thank you for all that you do and the LTHS leadership continue to, to navigate the educational environment for our children and faculty. My name is Kathy Young and my son is currently a sophomore at LTHS. I appreciate the opportunity to express my concern and feedback before you tonight via public comment at this meeting. It is my first priority and priceless gift as a mother to be an example, fight for my child and protect, help to protect the rights of all of our children. While I understand there are Illinois state guidelines to follow to return to school safely, I ask that you consider giving a choice to students, families that want to return to onsite learning by following the standard hybrid schedule moving forward. This automatic flip-flopping of class schedules from remote learning to hybrid every two weeks is confusing and can be more traumatic for students than allowing the ongoing, ongoing COVID nineteen data to guide the twenty twenty-one hybrid onsite learning schedule. I ask, have you surveyed the student body and asked them what they want for school? Teenagers are living this life and the actual student feedback might speak volumes on how you proceed to open up the high school moving forward. As you know, the physical and very serious mental health issues that are hidden behind COVID nineteen may not be worth the cost of being fearful of a virus that most can recover from. Data and metrics show that schools are not super-spreaders of the virus and there is now a vaccine available. Several neighboring high school districts have opened up for staggered onsite learning schedules indefinitely and safely following the metrics to stay open. Unfortunately, data is also showing at record high rates of increase in teen anxiety, depression and suicide. These issues are skyrocketing across our state and nation. We may, may never get a generation of children back, but together as educators, parents, coaches and leaders, we need to try harder together to find a better solution for student engagement and healthy learning. Lifelong emotional scars are being endured by our children and we have paralysis by analysis of school boards, which is harming our youth, both mentally and physically. Please consider opening up and offer an option for onsite learning hybrid every week for the remaining school year as the science metrics allow. I encourage you to use common sense and independent thinking as you make these important decisions for our children. Thank you for your time and go porters Catherine Young, LTHS parent and concerned community member. And I am, I am in touch, uh, with Mrs. Young.
Yes, thank you. I did see that email that you sent her, but thank you. All right, okay, moving on to our principals' reports.
Good evening, good evening, everybody. Thanks for, uh, having us here tonight. Uh, John and I have, um, several things we want to talk about, but I wanted to start off talking about just our freshman registration process. Uh, in a, a normal year, uh, we would have had all of our families in last weekend. Um, so I want to say a big thank you, uh, to Trish Sermon, to Janine Wheeler and to Eric Slager. They put together a, a phenomenal website that our families of the class of twenty twenty-five were able to get into and take a look at what we have to offer and be able to register online. Um, so that has been wonderful. Our guidance counselors picked it up from there. They've been conducting Zoom calls with families to help guide them in the direction that they need to be. And then also our fantastic registrars have been allowing for in-person, uh, assistance where needed. So it's an ongoing process, but we are almost there. We have less than a hundred families still left to, um, register and, uh, complete the enrollment. So we're very excited about that. Um, and taking a look at, um, our activities, our choir has brought us honor and distinction here to LTHS. Um, I, um, IIMEA, the Illinois Music Educators Association, we had twenty-seven of our choral students, um, receive all district honors, which is phenomenal, and senior Aiden Callahan is our top bass performer. And then also we had ten students make all-state, which is actually tied for our LTHS high and then actually is the most out of any schools in the state of Illinois. So we're very proud of our choir students. So that is a great, great accolade. And then athletics, when John and I wrote this last week, um, things have changed. As you know, last week we had it in a tier two, as Dr. McBride, uh, talked about earlier this evening. We are very excited to get our winter sports started and get our kids back into their co-curriculars. Um, so a lot of planning. I know that Mike Dwyer has been working all weekend, getting schedules together because it is great to get started today, um, and then have our spring sports, um, and summer sports start talking about their contact days as well. Also want to take this opportunity to, um, give a shout out and kudos to our athletic director, Mike Dwyer, who's been a part of our climate and culture committee, and he has been doing a phenomenal job. If you have been in the athletic area recently, uh, we, he has really done a great job of showcasing, showcasing all of our accomplishments and the great athletic history here at LTHS. So, uh, thank you to Mike Dwyer for that. Going along with climate and culture, um, the administration, um, and several representatives from, I apologize, I have kids coming in from practice now, um, but we had our administration and representatives actually meet with Phil Boyd and Learning for Living and go through their four Cs training that we mentioned to you earlier. That has been absolutely phenomenal. And then we in turn met with our subcommittees and took them through some professional development. And the subcommittees have reconvened and our subcommittees are, are celebrations, our language, onboarding and physical space. And they have really embraced these four Cs of connection, core values, cause and chronicles, and really are getting down to what it looks like, sounds like and feels like for us here at LTHS. So we're very excited to, uh, continue that work as well. So now John wanted to talk about our exciting opening with our hybrid days.
Thanks, Dr. Green, and good evening, everyone. As Dr. Green just mentioned, we were very excited, to say the least, to welcome our students back to the building last Thursday and Friday. I talked to several staff members and it indicated, I think this was the fourth time I've put Welcome Back Porters back on the main marquee in front of East Campus in this very unique school year. Uh, it's been great to be, for me personally, to be in the cafeteria. That's my station in the morning as we greet students. Our staff is doing such a tremendous job at all of our entrances at both campuses. As Dr. Green knows, I know she's outside, I believe she's outside, and she's braving the elements as our students enter the building and just to see how great of a job our staff is doing and, and greeting our students into the building. But then also just to see our students doing a really nice job with wearing their mask, doing the best they can with sanitizing their hands, the several stations that we have throughout the building and both campuses, the physical distancing, they're doing a nice job with that. As, um, I had the opportunity to be in the hallways as much as possible, especially the first couple of days. Um, our, our students are doing what we are asking them to do. Dr. Green and I have, um, via email, sent messages to the students. We each created our own individual videos that we sent last Wednesday to the students prior to them coming back to campus just with some reminders and important information. Character education is something that's very important to Dr. Green and I that we promote very much at both campuses.
And our staff does a nice job of recognizing our students by filling out what we call our SWOT cards, students who act terrifically. And I had the opportunity about eight different times here as we have returned to our in-person schedule to visit classrooms, to recognize students, not just for them individually, but in front of their peers to show the great example that we talk about, about being best together and character education at L T H S. So I know our staff has been waiting since early November, since the last time we were in person for our students to return. So it really has been a great first three days now. And with a little schedule change, we will welcome our porters group back on Wednesday this week.
I have to confess, I have to confess, my thermometer is not working outside, so I am right inside the door. Lori Christopher was the one who was braving the elements outside, so I am right inside the door. But the word that I wanted to add for coming back for hybrid is excitement. The staff was excited, the students were excited to be back in the building. And it was like, it was, as John mentioned, it was the fourth first day. So, but this time it wasn't as quiet in the building. The kids actually were more excited and the staff was really energetic to be with each other in person. So I appreciate that, but, but it has been great to welcome the kids back into the building. So I had to confess, John, you put me outside and I had to.
Well, then I have to give Lori Christopher some props then. So thank you, Lori. Hope you're wearing a good coat out there. So as Dr. McBride had alluded to earlier, we are going to have the schedule of approximately two weeks of in-person and then we'll revert back to two weeks of remote. We will do that through March 12th and we are anticipating obviously before that date, having a good indication of what the learning platform will be for the remainder of our school year, whether we continue with the two weeks on, two weeks off, or possibly hopefully more consecutive weeks of in-person learning. For our discipline report, as you could see that there were not many disciplined events for the month of December. However, that does not mean that our deans are not working. In fact, they are working very hard with our guidance department. As we have alluded to the past several board meetings, the extra work that has been put in to identify students and to bring them into the building for some additional work time, support time, intervention time. Our deans and our guidance office staff continue to do a great job. Our last board meeting in December prior to winter break, I explained that we had brought in some students just before the last week of the semester. We started the second semester in January, January thirteenth and fourteenth, again identifying students to be more proactive to get them off to a good start. Not only to log on to their classes when we were in the full remote schedule, but to also do some activities with them, to meet with their counselors, to meet with their deans, to have an individual progress report given to them, to allow them to get in there walking on the track in the field house when us administrators and staff have had the opportunity to talk to these students and really hear from them, how much they appreciate our efforts of bringing them into the building. Several expressed to me how at-home learning in the full remote model has been very challenging for them for several different reasons. And I've had several students express to me how much they value the in-person experience. And these are coming from some of our students that are struggling a little bit. So again, it reiterates our focus and our determination to have the best possible in-person learning experience. So again, we really hats off to our assistant principals, Matt Bartley, Trish Sermon, Jen Webberay, our dean's office staff, our guidance office staff. We are looking again to bring in more students when we go back to full remote after February fifth. We go back to full remote for two weeks, we will be bringing in another group of students in February. So we're very much looking forward to that. And I think Carrie, we're going to mention our attendance report. I think you're muted there, Carrie.
Sorry about that. Yes. If you take a look at our attendance report that we have for this month, our attendance was at a ninety-seven percent. So taking a look at that, we're, we're very pleased. Obviously, these days we're in the remote setting, but ninety-seven percent attendance is something that we are proud of and something that we applaud with our students. As you could see with our dropout report here that's coming up. Excuse me. You could see that we did have a total of, we did have two dropouts in the month of December that the guidance department also worked through. Unfortunately, trying to make sure that those kids are followed up with and try and make sure that we have some type of follow up so that we can see where, where they fell off and then see if we can figure out what program to put them into so that we could make sure that they meet some type of requirement, whether it be through a, a GED program or an early levers program, because we want to make sure that they have the opportunity to be successful. Can I do a mic check? Can you guys hear me? Okay, sorry. We can hear you. Yes. All right. Well, thank you. Thank you for all that information.
And I'm glad that things were working out. As far as a question, how many, how many have registered? You said, I know that you're waiting for one hundred. How many have registered so far, freshmen?
This incoming class should be about eight seventy-five this year. So we'll have a little bit of a dip and then we'll head back up into the mid nine hundreds the following year. So we have less than a hundred and kudos to our feeder schools. The kids that didn't even get online and register, we called them about a week ago. And the feeder schools actually called the individual families for us, which was phenomenal. So we had a mad rush last week. So we're under a hundred, which is good, and we'll continue to do our phone blasts. We did a phone blast again last week with the feeder schools help. And then I did one myself to try to get these families in because we want to make sure that the kids are able to get into the electives that they would like. So we need to do that pretty soon. As you know, tallies are right around the corner.
Thank you. Thank you so much to Dr. Green and Dr. Green. Thank you. All right. Let's see. Next, we have our district reports, information reports, student achievement. Twenty twenty, as you can see, you have this book right in front of you. So, all right, Dr. McBride.
Okay. And hey, before I, one procedural thing, I did not notice because I was presenting the policies, but procedurally, Mr. Dick Ives joined us. Kathy Maxwell, can you announce just for the public record what time Mr. Ives joined us? Ms. Maxwell, what time did Mr. Ives, just to read into the public record, what time did he join the meeting?
He joined the meeting at eight fifteen P M.
Okay. And you might notice he's joining us by phone. So, Mr. Dick Ives, that'll be reflected in the meeting, join the meeting as a board of education member at eight fifteen P M. Great. Thank you. Hey, I know that board members, you know, we are at eight thirty and, you know, oftentimes this agenda item, student achievement twenty twenty is a, a, a single board meeting. And as, as we present to you, a number of us, and we're going to be brief and let me explain that format as I get into it. You know, if board members ever do want to go back to that format where we do a single meeting just to explore student achievement. Oftentimes, we are presenting to you about student achievement in October or November because we have all of the data from the previous school year. That was interrupted this year because in the spring, as board members know, we did not have an S A T administered to our students. That did not happen until the middle of October. And we did not have that data back in time until now to include that in a report. But it also gave us an unusual advantage to report to you the whole twenty twenty year, both first, second semester, excuse me, which was the first semester of the pandemic, second semester, what we saw happen, and then also the S A T in there as well. So we have a number of, of colleagues that will present. And I know just a visual, this is quite a thick binder, so please, I am not going to open it up and begin reading on the first page and go through it. What I hope and, and members of the public can access this through the public materials that we posted. And I hope for board members that you have it and know that its detail is, is something you can question us about at any time. Be it tonight, be it the next meeting, the next meeting and the next meeting. It's also designed as a resource for you to take a look at this material, to understand what we're seeing this year. I want to tell you just a little story that was shared by Dr. Webberay and Mrs. Christopher. Last Friday, they were on a call that reminded me so much of the calls that I've been on with other superintendents, where they were sharing some of this data. And one of the things that they shared was our failure rate through last semester. Well, the first semester of the pandemic in spring twenty twenty and particularly last semester in the fall semester of twenty twenty. And when they shared our low failure rate, across all of our departments are at historically low failure rates. There was, as they described it, an audible gasp. And this is not disparaging any of our colleagues, but my experience has also been that sometimes when I'm talking to my superintendent colleagues, they're experiencing in this pandemic and the challenges it presents for students and teachers, twenty percent, thirty percent failure rates, sometimes in single subjects, sometimes in areas like P E where they have waived the P E requirement entirely because students are struggling with it so much. So the audible gasp was how low our student failure rate was. And I know that Mrs. Christopher will go into it, but I'm offering that to board members and to the public as something, not to be overly congratulatory, but also something that we should note. It's a sign of the work that our teachers have done and that our students have done. And it's an advertisement, this entire binder is an advertisement how school has sometimes not been in person. But school has never been closed in Lockport Township High School District two oh five. And it really, I think this report shows that our teachers have been teaching in new and innovative ways. And our students have been responding as much as there are times that we feel that that's not the case. And I'm going to let my colleagues really amplify that for you in so many different ways. What we're going to do is, is spotlight for you in a succinct way, some data points that we think you should pay attention to. But I want to ask board members a question. How important is it in your mind that a student graduate in June twenty twenty or December twenty twenty? How important is that? Does, does that matter? Is that graduation, a child who graduates in June twenty twenty, where we typically say you're graduating with your class, versus a child who graduates in December twenty twenty? How do you feel about that? Mrs. Johnson, I can just tell you want to jump right on in.
I knew you could call on me.
And I see Mrs. Bickus is unmuted too, so.
You know, my philosophy is that the child graduates and they're ready to either be able to go to college or to start some kind of career. That's what I'm important to me.
Okay. And, and I mentioned in Mrs. Johnson and other board members, and I'll jump over to Mrs. Bickus because you were, you as a board were very concerned. I was so impressed with you with our thirteen students who did not graduate in June twenty twenty. You were very concerned about that. Due to our park program, nine of those students graduated in twenty twenty by December.
Commend you because I did see that, that you did have nine of them graduate.
Right. And so I think that, and, and research wise, that's, that's an amazing thing. It almost never happens. It's, it's a real struggle for students to come back, but it's a tribute to the program and it's a tribute to the students who graduated. Mrs. Bickus, you had a thought.
Yeah. The reason why I'm on this school board is just that every student deserves an education. And with that being said, it's our job as educators and, and board members to make sure all of our students graduate. It's the best thing we can give to those kids. And that piece of paper gets them into college, gets them into other careers and it's really important. And I, I am right there with Luann. Working our tails off to help those thirteen students is so important. And again, commending you guys for graduating those nine in December. So it, to me, it doesn't matter when they graduate, just that they do.
And, and I agree with you and it's that, that small spotlight, which might seem in a large high school district like ours, you know, those thirteen might not be, you know, when I say, well, we have so many other students kind of is going to be a theme. It sets up a theme that you're going to hear in this presentation because we're, at the same time, we're disappointed that those students didn't make it in June. And as a district, like you said, Mrs. Bickus, we should develop as many strategies as possible so that we can have them graduate with their class. It's a huge success that, that we had nine of those students graduate in December twenty twenty and some who are continuing to work. Where it has some impact, if you open up your binder and you look at the, the front part, something called the National Clearing House. And the National Clearing House is a service that we use to track our students when they leave us. It is significant because like you said, Mrs. Bickus, a student who has that diploma can now begin going into industry apprentice programs, can go into the military, can go to J J C, can go to a four-year college. And it's significant because those nine students had a delay. This was a year where there's something really amazing in that data that there is a huge drop off of students enrolling in four-year institutions. I think that has a lot to do with the pandemic. But we are very happy because our students who are in four-year institutions, who have gone to a four-year college, are staying in those four-year colleges at a percent of eighty percent, seventy-five percent. So what that National Clearing House data is telling us is that student who goes off to a four-year college very successful in that setting. So that's really a reason to celebrate. But we also have work to do. And kind of at the end of this presentation, I'll wrap it up because something that we've noticed that we have to be very thoughtful about is our students who go to non-four-year colleges, junior colleges, community colleges, don't have as high of a retention rate. So this presentation really is where we've really succeeded. But it's also, you're going to hear a flavor throughout it of work yet to do. Work we still have to do as a district. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to Lori Christopher.
Before she gets started, Dr. McBride, I want to call on a term for one of your fellow superintendents this past weekend. It's called opportunity gaps.
Right. And we're going to talk about the opportunity gap. I'll kind of wrap that up. But the, the opportunity, I'm so glad you mentioned that because oftentimes we talk about the achievement gap and we compare averages. You know, my friend Luann, she got an A in the class and I got a B. She must be so much better. And we want to be careful with that because you're a great segue to Mrs. Christopher about opportunity and something she'll, she'll mention like advanced placement or what I was mentioning on the National Clearing House, the opportunity to successfully complete school wherever that is when you leave Lockport Township High School. Mrs. Christopher.
Thank you. So the first set of report, Bob talked about this group of thirteen students. And then he zoomed out really broad to the National Clearing House report, which encompasses students who have graduated for several years from Lockport. I'm going to bring it into still thirty thousand feet, looking at our students' progress. The first report is that grade distribution report from the spring. It's on pages six through seventeen in your binder. And one thing you should note there is there are more As than Fs throughout the report. You might say, well, Lori, there's also this thing called an NG. What is that? So if you'll remember back to the spring, we had some really strong guidance from I S B E about Fs. And so we created something called an NG, which was a no grade. And what this meant was there simply was not enough evidence to give a student a grade. This did not impact a student's GPA. If a student needed the particular course, they got an NG in for graduation, they would still have to retake the course. But also, if you'll recall in the spring, we really emphasized with teachers, opportunities for relearning, reteaching, retakes, redos and reassessments. And we still see that going on now. Also remember there were no final exams in the spring and we had some flex stays at the end there. So teachers could wrap up their courses accordingly and wrap upgrades. So that's really what I would highlight from those pages six through seventeen. Then I would have you jump to the next one is the A P report, which starts on page eighteen. And on the first page, page eighteen, it shows you And on the first page, page 18, it shows you that we continue to grow the number of students taking AP tests. The total number of students and the number of tests we take, our passing rate is incredibly high. AP teachers work tirelessly, but somebody like Trevor Packer, who's the head of AP, might say there is room for opportunity to grow more students in there, right? He would suggest that maybe 60, if you're not, if you're well over 60% passing rate, there's room for students that you haven't tapped on to come on in and take on that challenge. And so also, if you would turn to page, I would say on page 19, you'll see our graduating class summary. 26.4% of students passed an advanced placement test, which would give them some college credit. And I know when we passed the, the board goals, we said, we want to see, we had a variety of opportunities, right? It could be AP, it could be dual credit, industry credential, work, but we said we want to increase that number by the year 2025. And certainly 26.4% is the place that gives us opportunity to grow. Also, you can look at this as well on the next page, on page 20. It talks about there's still some discrepancy between different groups of students getting opportunities like AP and where they represent in our school. So this here suggests only 7.2% of the AP test takers were students who qualify for free or reduced lunch. And that really, that number for our school is about 19%. So where's the opportunity to get those students into this, this programming? The next report I'm going to refer to is the SAT report, which you've already seen. It's page 23. And really, you see that all things being equal, we kind of maintained where we had been even through the pandemic. So there's some other charts there that accompany it. And then lastly, I want to talk about the grade distribution from this semester. Again, like last semester, you will see more As across all levels than Fs. We see a growth in this. Dr. McBride talked to you about some, some impressive work here in Lockport by our teachers with those things I had mentioned earlier. But also remember, we, through your support, instituted two things during this time. And that was the intervention time where student, where teachers could access and connect with students and give students the additional help they needed. And that was built into the confines of the school day. And we also had remote learning connection time where teachers had the capacity to either help students or maybe they were sending out emails to students or revising lessons in this new paradigm so that they could reach students. So if I was to say, hey, we've gotten fewer Fs, more As, I'm interested in, in if any board members have any insight in talking to people in your neighborhoods. What do you think had the greatest impact that we did to help our students succeed during this time? Maybe Ms. Lopez Caneva? I don't know if anybody's talked to you about that. If you have any insights.
Really, no one has really reached out or I've heard, you know, all I've heard is many great compliments to the teachers and to administrators for helping, you know, the students and even the resources that they have available to help these kids during this, you know, when, when they were online learning. But other than that, nothing, nothing else. They just were very appreciative of all the efforts that we were putting into, especially to the teachers, you know, reaching out to those students, helping them.
And I think you threw in something in there I didn't even present, and that's about the resources that we had to instructional technology specialists. We were offering PD to teachers and on these new tools that working hard to engage students and our teachers really did and continue to do so, work really hard to engage our students.
I think just in, just talking with the, the people in my neighborhood, they've said the amount of grace the teachers have given to students and the ability to learn something when it's not learned. So if a student is struggling, they're giving them those opportunities as well as that time in the afternoon for them to meet. I, I have one particular neighbor who takes advantage of it at every opportunity. And I think that just it's amazing how much time is being dedicated to that learning process.
Thanks, Dr. Shaw.
Lori, can you hear me?
Yes, I can, Mr. Ives.
Yeah. Oh, okay. One of the things that I hear is that not only does the administration, teachers and staff do a great job when the student approaches them, it is the ease of information and maybe it's the improved website and things like that, that if they need some help and they're going to look for it, the communication on where the resources are, and there are great resources. But I think there's better knowledge in the community of what's available.
Thanks, Mr. Ives. Thank you for your input.
Yeah. And let's turn it over to Dr. John Green. And thank you so much, Mrs. Christopher. And thank you to our staff. I think a lot of the things that you see with grades would be a much longer presentation, but I would really check out the webinar that Mrs. Bickus mentioned. A lot of that is the way that our teachers are approaching students and some work that they're, they're doing. Dr. Green, thank you.
Thanks, Dr. McBride. The research report, the data report, I should say, that I will be presenting is the sophomore on track for the class of 23, which can be found on page 48 of your packet. Research within the past decade suggests how important freshman year is for high school students. And in fact, it can be a highly predictor for success in terms of students being on track for graduation. And as you can see, 93% of the class of 23 at the end of their freshman year are considered on track to graduate. So yes, we are very happy about that strong number. However, we still have work to do as there is from the, this report, 7% of this year's sophomores are not on track. So what are some of the things that we are doing at LTHS? Again, freshman year is a very important year. And I just mentioned that it can be a key predictor for students being on track. Then they get to sophomore year. And this year is just as critical. Sophomores turn 16 at some point during their sophomore year. And that puts them one year away from legally being able to drop out of high school if they want to with a parent's signature. So in the state of Illinois, so it's a critical year. And particularly for these 7%, for any students who are off track, it is important that we connect with them. So what are some of the things that we are doing? Well, first of all, we're taking a look at some of who, who exactly are the students that are, are not on track? So as you can see from the data report, we have 26.5% of our black students not on track, just under 10% of our Hispanic students and 21% of our special education students. So in terms of special education, Dr. Huntington will speak a little bit later, this report regarding the individual responses that the special education department looks at. But there are a couple of other, other areas that I want to discuss regarding programs for our sophomores. The Park Program that was mentioned earlier by Dr. McBride, this particular, this past semester, I should say, 13 students who were not on track at the end of their freshman year were enrolled in Park. They had to recover either one or more credit that they did not fulfill from their freshman year. And five of those 13 actually got back on track because of the assistance of Park. And if I could just mention some, an additional point about Park, I look back, it was actually three years ago that Dr. Webb, Ray and myself actually presented to the Board of Education. Most of you were on the board at that time. It was actually the January meeting of 2018. So we want to thank you for your support of this program. As you've heard a couple of times already this evening, the importance of this program as it has assisted several students in being able to get that LTHS diploma. And in, in this particular metric, it is helping some sophomores get back on track. The other program that I want to discuss is the Renewed Scholars Program. The Renewed Scholars Program is a, in a way, it's, it's a, a study hall that these at-risk students must attend where there are several features of the program that help them with their, with their academics, but also with social, emotional learning as well. This year, we currently have 76 sophomores who are in the Renewed Scholars Program. We have an English tutor, Lisa Holder, who's been with the program for several years. And we have Stephanie Kubin, who is in her first year, particularly for the Renewed Scholars as a math tutor. And it's a four, four days a week. The English and math are really the primary focus to give these students additional support in those areas. But there are other features of the program that are important as well. Our guidance counselors have a key role in this program as they present to students once a week on things such as time management, organizational skills, goal setting. We also have a unique feature of this program where we have students from our National Honor Society who are peer mentors. This is such a key characteristic to helping some of these students who are at risk of not graduating, connect with their peers. So even with the challenges of this school year, with us having to largely be full remote, we've still been able to have this program. And as I actually just had a little email exchange with Lisa Holder the other day, she's been very pleased with the work that's been going on this semester and they can, last semester. And as that work continues on for, for the next semester, to try to help these students get back on track and to graduate from LTHS. My question is to the board in this summary that I just provided, is there anything that you would like me to elaborate more on the support that we are trying to provide for these particular students with any of the intervention programs? I know that, you know, again, we're very proud of the 93% who are on track. But again, like I mentioned at the top, we still have work to do with the 7% who are not on track. So are there any questions regarding anything that we are doing here at both campuses?
Dr. Green, I have a question. So is this across the kids that are not on track? It's across all grades or particular, are you looking at particular subjects? How are you determining that they're not on track?
So this, Luanne would be a student who failed one or more subject their freshman year.
So Luanne, by the end of their freshman year, they have to have five full year credits.
Okay. Okay.
Any other questions or comments regarding the sophomore on track report?
And Dr. Green, most of these students, I just want to elaborate a little bit what Ms. Johnson was saying. Are most of these students, because I know you said you have tutors in English and math, is that where most of these students are failing? It's in English and in math?
Yes, it's very much focused on English and math. That's what the primary focus on. But it does give them the opportunity and the ability to, to focus on some other subjects as well. But it is, like I said, four days of English and math tutoring.
And, and we focus on English and math because they have to have four years of English and math, correct?
Four years of English, three years of math, but it tends to be a subject that is, that needs to be focused on more with the students.
More with the students, okay.
I have another question.
Sure.
Did these students come into Lockport behind, a lot of them? And they just, for some reason, haven't been able to catch up?
So you're asking of the 7% who were not considered on track, Luanne? Like, were they behind going into freshman year?
Yeah, like, you know, they started out behind. Sometimes a kid comes into Lockport and they behind. It's hard for them to catch up.
And I think I know where Luanne's going with this. Sorry, Dr. Green.
No, it's okay.
We did have a conversation at a board meeting about how the feeder schools do provide some type of information to our freshmen, you know, campus or administration of who is kind of behind. Maybe Carrie can elaborate on that.
We do have articulation with the feeder school. And I apologize, guys, I'm having trouble with my headset. So if at any point you can't hear me, just put your hands up. Please let me know. So we do the articulation with our feeder school. And that's where a lot of our interventions, like right now, we're relying heavily for the class of 25 on teacher recommendation from the feeder schools because we don't have that standardized test that we normally give them in October. So teacher recommendation is huge. So we're relying on them to let us know if they need the math enrichment, which is the second period of math, whether they need math lab, which is that mandatory, like tutoring during their study hall, whether they need the reading classes. Those are things that we're relying heavily on from the feeder. So the feeders are telling us, you know, which interventions the kids really need. But then we're also, like, it's, it was critical last spring. It's going to be even critical, that even more critical this spring is to have the conversations on what concepts were covered by their students and where they see their students really lacking. We just had this conversation in the planning council with all the feeder principals last Thursday. We had a conversation about this because our department leaders communicate with the feeders and say, these are the essentials that they have to have coming in now. You know, and that has changed, you know, from the last several years, based on the predicament that we've been. But that's critical for them to let us know what they were able to cover and how their kids are doing. So we can try, try to close that gap a little bit. So far this year, our teachers have been phenomenal. Like, for example, math, math is so linear. The teachers completely rethought how they were going to approach integrated math one. You know, they had to review a lot of concepts that were actually eighth grade standards to make sure that our kids got that basis because that builds for I Am One, Two and Three.
I guess what I'm looking at is from some of the feeder schools, I think we talked about this here, that when you have professional development days, they may be inviting some of the feeder schools to come in. And maybe they could see the importance of where you guys are going and some of your methods. And that would help the kids coming in.
Absolutely. And kudos, kudos to our department chairs. Our department chairs have been great at the articulation meetings. Not only have they done that, they've shared a lot of their Google Drives with our feeder schools. So they have access to our curriculum and everything that we're doing. So I, you know, appreciate our department chairs taking that on. But just about every subject, they have shared their complete drives with the feeder school staff so that they could actually use our resources. You know, if they want to, they can use the resources that we have here at Lockport to help prepare their kids.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you for your questions and your suggestions. Yeah. And to build on that a little, go just a little bit deeper. Dr. Webb Ray is going to share a little bit more about the data about intervention in particular. And then she's going to turn it over to Carrie, Carrie Green to talk about another important metric, freshman on track. Dr. Webb Ray.
Thank you. Good evening. I want to provide some additional information to what Dr. Green had shared earlier about the interventions we provided for students during our full remote time. So the data actually begins on page 37. Just going to give you some highlights of that. We knew early on that we had students who were struggling. And we felt like the best way to reach out to those students would be to bring them in for some in-person learning time, even when we were remote. We knew that a significant factor to their struggling was the fact that they were lacking the connection. And so we wanted to provide opportunity for that connection. And so we had seniors and junior students and some sophomore students that we brought in where we were able to have conversations with deans and counselors, have just walk and talk time where we invited all of the staff members to go out to the fieldhouse and walk with the students. They were able to get PE minutes for their Stravas, but also just have a chance to socialize and, and chat. We had opportunities for the students to listen to guest speakers, to have some individual work time. We tried to make it so that it didn't seem to the students as though it was a punishment, but it was actually, we want to work with you. We want to partner with you to help you be successful when you're here. So if you look on page 42, you'll see that of the senior students that we brought into the building for remote, during remote, 80% of those students were able to see an increase in their grades between when we brought them in the first time and when they reached their final grade. That's opposed to 61% of the students that did not come in and take part in that, even though we invited them. If you move on over to page 43, our junior students really jumped on the opportunity. Of the 55 students that we invited who were juniors, 49 of them came in for at least one of those days. 39 of those students came for all three days. And it made a difference. On 40, page 47, you'll see that 75% of those junior students were able to see an increase in their grades for the, the final grade for the semester, hopefully getting most of those students to passing grades. And so we saw some things that we did that worked and we want to continue to build on those things. We're actually meeting tomorrow to start planning for the next time we're going to bring students in when we go back to remote in February. And so any, any thoughts you might have later on or right now about how we can additionally support these students? Because we want to build on the connection that we have with them. Ms. Johnson?
Oh, I didn't mean to raise my hand.
Okay. All right. We, we all really enjoy the raise your hand feature. It's kind of fun, so.
Oh, sorry, Dr. Web Ray. Go ahead.
Oh, sorry, Dr. Web Ray, go ahead.
I was going to throw it over to Dr. Green, so I will throw it right back to you.
Yeah, and I appreciate the board. Thank you for your patience. We've got Dr. Green and we've got Dr. Huntington as well. And I know we've got a few other agenda items, but thank you for hanging in there. I think Mrs. Bickus, you have a question.
I just, the programs and the interventions that you're doing, are they going to transfer when we go right back into full-time learning? Oh, I lost you.
Yeah, go right ahead, Dr. Web Ray.
Well, I, I was just going to say that that is like in the forefront of our thinking and discussing and planning is how can we continue to find ways to provide these interventions, support all of our students in their learning? Whether we are in remote or we're hybrid or fingers crossed, we're back full-time with all of our students next year.
And another thing that, I apologize, Bob. One of the other things that we're doing now is, you know, requiring the students to come to the intervention time, the Porter Assistance and Connection Time that's taking place from 1:20 to 3:00. And kudos to Jen Web Ray on helping us set up the Responsive Schedular in Infinite Campus. So we're going to be able to gather more information and more data to, to take a look at, how is this time affecting our students? We know it's going to benefit them. And so we're really interested as an administration. And I think our teaching staff has talked to us and has said that they value this time. How can we incorporate this then into a, a normal schedule? Hopefully going back next year and having the kids back five days a week. You know, how could we incorporate this to assist our kids, to give them that, to give them the assistance and the connection that they need? So yes, Lisa, that is definitely something that is at the forefront, like Jen said.
And that might be a situation where much later, we're speaking to you as board members to, to really leverage what we've learned of personalizing education on a one-on-one level in a, in a, in a large high school district. If you can bring it down to individuals, and I think most of us in our own education and learning would say some of the best learning we did was one-on-one with an instructor. So how can we institutionalize this? So Carrie, you want to pick up from there? That's a great place for you to, to, to pick up. And then we'll kind of move to Dr. Huntington and kind of wrap.
Absolutely. Absolutely. Wanted to go back to that ninth grade year. John mentioned how important the ninth grade year is to our students. It really kind of sets their trajectory for their high school career. And one of the things that we have to do is we have to do a mind shift with our kids when they walk in the door. Because for the first time, they're earning credits, required credits towards a graduation. So that whole concept of social promotion is still sometimes in their mind. So we have to shift their mind and help them to understand that these are required courses that you have to pass. And so getting kids to understand that in the 10 years that I've been at the freshman center as the principal, it's not until a lot of times, some of these kids after first semester will say, what do you mean? I have to retake this course? Well, you didn't pass it, so come on back. And they're like, oh, really? And so that's a good wake-up call for some of our kids. And research shows that ninth grade year, when kids are on track, they are four times more likely to graduate from high school. So that's why, you know, one of the reasons why our state put freshman on track on the school report card, because it is such a huge indicator. And like I said before, at the end of the year, it's the five full courses. So I'm grateful that we're taking a look at after semester one, how many kids are on track? So they, they can only have, you know, they can only have one F in one of the core areas and still be on track. So English, math, science, and social studies. As you took a look, John actually mentioned that the sophomores, the class of 23, right now, they're at 93%. And if you take a look and on page 49, which it references freshman on track, at the end of the semester, we had 89.2% of them on track. So all of the efforts that were put forth and kind of shifting that mind, we got them to 93%. So this year, right now, after first semester, the class of 24, we're at 92.7% on track. So we still have 72 kids that are not on track. And so having those conversations with these kids, we've identified these kids. We're putting the interventions like we have in the past into play. We've mentioned to you guys before about our credit recovery, the credit recovery. And so now the kids that didn't pass English, you know, that is a huge gatekeeper for our kids. They need four years in order to graduate. If you analyze a lot of transcripts of students who have not graduated on time, one of the huge things is that English, because they get in the hole and it's hard to recover. So we're actually pulling them from the Digital Pathways course, pulling them from an elective, and they're going into an English credit recovery, trying to recover that first semester credit. And then we are also starting our Integrated Math Intervention that takes place after school. This year, we're trying something different with the ability to be remote. We're going to place in the evening. So we're going to actually go from five to six with these students. And we're going to do it through an Apex program. So we have 46 students that we're targeting right now. Hopefully, you know, you might have a little bit more home support, you know, with parents being able to come home from work and see what the student is doing. So we're going to do that from five to six. And these two have been huge interventions that have allowed our kids to, to get back on track and also do some mind shifting with them while they're in this intervention. And the kids that we pulled out, out of the Digital Pathways course, if they're able to finish their English credit, a lot of these kids are deficient in another credit. We put them on a different program. And so many times, these kids are able to get not only their English credit back, but some of them are missing their biology credit for first semester, and they're able to recover that. So we're very excited. We have great staff, certified staff, who are very eager and willing to really help students. And then this year, our deans department, our counselors have been phenomenal, just like John's over at East Campus. Both campuses, they've been doing these knock and talks. At the freshman center, we've done over a dozen, where we've actually gone to students' houses. And actually, we have a couple of kids where the deans and the counselors have showed up more than once on their doorstep to try to figure out what's taking place. And our teams, one of the nice things about the freshman center is the teaming concept. So our teams have had student interventions with families, with the whole team of teachers. So it's not just a one-on-one with one teacher. It's the whole teaching team having a conversation with the family. And then the intervention sessions, like Jen mentioned, we have them at the freshman center. It has been wonderful to bring the students in. We've invited 113 students. We've had 77% of our kids show up. But of those 77% that attended, 72% of them have had increases in two out of the three main areas of math, English, and science. So we are very happy to have that take place. But during those intervention times, you know, Jen and Trish have done a great job working with our deans, our counselors to set up things that get the connection piece there. You know, they're able to do their walks for PE, get that credit back, but showing them that sense of caring and that sense of belonging and bringing them in. And actually, they've allowed opportunities, Jen didn't mention this, for individual teachers to come and schedule times to come and actually meet face-to-face with their individual students, which I know is very meaningful to a lot of our kids. Because I even had a kid say, hey, is Mr. Stone so going to come back down today? And I was like, wow, that really had an impact. You know, he wanted to see him again. And it took, you know, the supervisor that was in there, a quick email, and that student or that teacher showed up down there to make sure that that kid was there. Of these 72 students, the things that I'm really proud of is that in talking to our deans and our counselors and Trish Sermon, our AEP, they're able to tell the story about each one of these kids. You know, tell the story, whether it be a truant. Unfortunately, we have three students who are still not up to date with their vaccinations, who are not able to come back into school, which we were at two of their houses this week, you know, trying to figure out what's taking place, but they can tell the story. So I guess, you know, in hearing the interventions that we've done from Gem and I and talking about on track with John and I, is there any additional information that you guys want as a board? Or is there another area that you want us to, to explore as we move forward with these data presentations?
No, I think you're doing the best you can, you know, to help these 72 kids. But I know that if, you know, Ms. Johnson, if she has any other ideas, I'm sure she'll let you know how to pursue those other kids that are still falling behind.
I was thinking about it. Also, I'm glad to hear that you're doing something in the evening. I heard something about that at one of the high schools. I, you could tell I was doing some off, off book work this weekend. Anyway, they were saying that they do, they do some evening classes, some evening programs. Because like you said, that the parents are home. And sometimes kids need those parents to be home to get them more of an incentive to do what they need to do. So I'm glad you were pursuing that. But if I think of something, I hear something, I will gladly let you know, or Dr. McBride now.
We appreciate that.
You've got me reading a book right now, Mrs. Johnson. We're going to, Dr. Huntington is just going to bring, you know, her corner and that kind of integration that we do with special education and general education. We really don't think of them that way. We just think of it as education. And then I'll wrap things up. And again, really appreciate your, your patience to let us walk through this. And I know we've got a couple of other agenda items after this presentation. So, Dr. Huntington?
Okay, so throughout all of your data report, you saw that a special ed data was included in each of these reports. And so it's, it's my job to help our teams kind of focus in on what are we doing for students? And obviously, students with IEP have individual plans. And so we've been working on developing individual plans for these students that are not on track, you know, to make sure that they're getting the supports and the services that they need to get back on track. And so we're working with different kind of options. So for some of our students, we might have a credit recovery program. We might have extended learning opportunities. Summer programming is something that we consider and in-school intervention programming. And, and what's really nice about that one, we came right out of the box second semester with these students that are not on track. And 10 of the students, freshman students are in school every day, getting direct support so they don't fall behind for second semester, and they can get the support that they need for those credit recovery options that they may have. And then we have 24 students that have been coming into East Campus four days with direct support and supervision to make sure that they can kind of keep up and keep track. One thing that we did talk about at the beginning of this meeting, like, is it important that they graduate? And did they graduate on time? Sometimes when we're doing those individual plans, we do come right out, even in the freshman or sophomore year, and say, do we need to start looking at a fifth year of high school? Because for some of our students, you know, they can't do an eight-period day or not, you know, a seven-period day of rigorous coursework. They need some additional supports. They need additional time to learn some skills. And sometimes that doesn't fit neatly in a four-year package. So, so we do have those conversations sometimes earlier on and purposely plan for a four and a half or a five-year program for some of our students. It's rare, but it is something that we can explore if there, there is a need. But what I'm really proud of is our outstanding results that we've received through Lockport Academy. We were able to graduate two grade 13 students. One of them came back after dropping out. Three years ago, he came back and finished the semester in order to earn his diploma. And then another student that had also taken a semester off came back and was able to finish school. And then we, we graduated three of our seniors early because we, we did have some leeway and flexibility with online learning and, and different opportunities. And I'm happy to report that all three of those students are full-time, currently employed in competitive employment. And so that's something that they needed to do because they needed to be able to work to help support things at home. And so we were happy to be able to come up with individual plans for those students to allow them to meet that successful criteria and get into the workforce. So those are what's happening in special ed.
Thank you, Dr. Huntington. And you probably are getting a theme, you know, a theme as board members that there is plenty in, in this report to congratulate. Really no dip in SAT from the class of 2020 to the class of 2021. You know, higher than ever amount of As and a lower than ever amount of Fs. All evidence that teachers and students are doing amazing things, really amazing things, almost things that seem to defy some of the conditions that we're in right now. And that where we're doing most of our work is on the margins where there are students who are falling short, trying to early identify those students and develop ways to address those, those students. So I hope board members, as we kind of wrap up, can recognize the success. But as educators, we're almost always focused, and I think many of you are focused on one of the opportunities. So I want to wrap up with just three places of work that, that all of this data tells us. Science. You heard English and math is often an area of struggle. But when we look at the SAT, which is a door opener or a door closer in terms of that four-year college admission, science remains an area that is a defining area. Students who have three years of science outperform students who have two years of science. And now a mandate from the state will be on us for 2024 to make that a reality of lab science for more students through years. So we'll, we'll need to pay attention to that. Another areas we just have to, as Dr. Green did, we're just going to have to look at places in our reports where we see disparities, disparate achievement, whether it's between students by their race, by their income, by their special need. As you said, Mrs. Johnson, we've got to look for that opportunity gap and, and close it. And, and then finally, engagement and prevention. If there's been a theme here, it's about engaging students, keeping them engaged, preventing them from falling behind. We always want to be acting and not reacting. So those three areas, science, equity, engagement, and prevention is really what this data focuses us on. So I'm appreciative for your attention. I know we've got other reports that we have to do tonight. I would be remiss if I didn't thank one of our district office secretaries, Terry Lizinski, who put together all the materials in front of you, also the work of Doris Fleckenstein, who was so instrumental as well, as well as all the presenters for this evening. So if there are no any, and you know, further questions, I would ask board members really to keep this because you're going to see throughout the year, we'll reference this document for the academic work. So I'll turn it over to you, Mrs. Lopez-Kaniva, for the rest of the agenda, unless there are questions that I can answer in my role.
Thank you. Thank you for everything.
Thanks to all of our presenters. Great, great job by our team.
Great job. Yes, thank you. Very informative. Okay, and moving on, we have our, let's see, district goals dashboard.
And you have an attachment. We're just going to really go around and very briefly, what we want to do is just make a little bit of space. We established on September 12th, our goal areas. You've already heard a lot about student achievement. But what we want to do in this segment is just remind board members, we're aware of the district goals that we set at that board meeting. We want to be mindful of them. And just a very quick snippet of progress on each one of them, because it's about progress, not perfection. Mrs. Christopher, just, could you update with your, where you're at with the dashboard?
So I'm excited. We worked with Five Lab, and we now have a way that we can track how our students are doing in those AP dual-credit industry credential classes. We put that on there, and we're still working, we're working to define that employment metric. We've got that defined. We just got to get it into our student information system.
Terrific, thanks. And stop us if you have a question. Mr. Kandari, looking at the employment landscape and your goal area.
Good evening, everyone. We've been looking at what we have available, the positions. We've already posted, anticipated to get an early jump on, on folks, candidates who may want to join us here in Lockport. We also look forward to our licensed staff retirement numbers for the next three or four years. And the 2005 numbers are still pending. So a lot, we're, we're moving into the busy season now.
And, and part of that is to, you know, Mr. Kandari's goal is to, to try to bring that diversity that you heard in East Pocket talk about, getting out early with known retirements and recruiting candidates. Mrs. Cora, you want to weigh in on your segment of the dashboard?
Sure. The days cash on, cash on hand, the district goals maintained between six and 12 months. I've listed in here, looking back at October, you see where we were at the audit report of 11.9 months, based on the days cash on hand and the estimated financial profile. In September, it jumps up a little bit because that's when all of the fall collections come in. So we collect all the money, then we spend it all. So that's just a timing of the cash. Looking where we're at at the end of December, if you look at the statement of position, our total month's cash on hand is at 11 at this point. So we're, we're right there within the goal at this point.
Dr. Green and Dr. Greenen, we know we heard a lot about intervention. I don't know if there's anything you want to add. You know, the board has your dashboard. Anything to build on from your earlier presentation? We are just going to continue to use our, our Five Lab and Responsive Schedular tool in Infinite Campus to be able to collect data and analyze to see how our progress and interventions are going.
and interventions are going. You heard us talk about specific students that we've been bringing in, bringing in different times of the school year. And we've had 231 students between both campuses that we've brought in these past several months for a lot of the great things that we talked about already tonight, and we're going to continue to do that.
Oh, go ahead, Mr. Dusterhoff, technology.
All right. So yeah, we have picked out the Chromebook for next year. It's exactly the, not exactly, it's the same model. It's the 500E that the freshmen and sophomores have, but it's the next generation. Most vendors didn't do a lot of work this year in upgrading or changing their models for lots of reasons, supply chain being one of the biggest ones. But we already placed our order early this, earlier this month, so that we were far enough ahead in the line. And, and our supplier anticipates us not having any trouble getting our Chromebooks for the fall, that we should have them at our normal time of May, June timeline, and we'll be good to go. And our current break-fix numbers continue to, to trend in the right direction. The freshman, sophomore, and juniors devices are, have different screens, and they, they break far fewer, far less than the ones that the seniors have. And so that continues to trend in the right direction.
Great. And Mrs. Wheeler, just something to spotlight from your communications goal.
We started out the semester with a big push to our, to social and emotional efforts. And we, we launched a new channel to, to really highlight the resources that Guidance and through the P program have. So we have a new support and wellness channel. And we've done a lot to, to push out more information to our students through our new Student Splash page. And also, you've probably seen, we've done a lot of videos to, to really highlight the different support that the school offers for assistant, assistance connection time by doing videos. And everything we do, we try to push out on the website, on our social media platforms, anytime we can, to make sure our families are well-informed and our students.
That just rounds it out. A little bit of the work that we're doing, you know, any board member questions that we could take?
I love the dashboard. I use it all the time. It's a great tool for us. So thank you very much. And you guys are doing this amount of work in a very difficult time. So thank you again. I haven't had enough chance to say this, but Tony, congratulations on your notable recognition award, too. So I thought this was a great time to bring that up as well. So I think that's fantastic.
Absolutely. Yeah, he makes us around the office. Call him Tony Kandari, comma, notable recognition. It's a mouthful. We're getting used to it. Back, back to you, Mrs. Lopez-Keneva.
I wanted to make that comment, Dr. McBride.
Oh, go right ahead. Of course.
I think that we should be proud that we're doing more communication to the parents and to the public than we ever have, you know. So, and we're reaching out, asking for their opinions. So thank you, Ms. Wheeler, and Eric, and whomever else is in part of it, you know. So.
Yeah, Deanna Gregorich is also a huge part of that. So they're all three working. We've had to make Mrs. Bickus a dashboard for them, for them to track of their communication. So, back to you, Mrs. Lopez-Keneva.
Yes, same is sad. Thank you to everyone, all of you for all that information and everything. All right. Thank you. All right. Next, we're moving on to the information report, maintenance report. We have it there in front of you. A lot of things going on.
Yeah, I'll just spotlight it. Mr. Thompson's in the meeting with us as well. The Afield project is finished. It's done. And for Mr. Ives, I was over there today. The stanchions are erected for the net on the secondary softball field to protect cars. So obviously, the netting itself isn't up. That's a seasonal thing. We're spending a lot of time.
Much appreciated, but we're not just protecting the cars. It's the fans.
Right, right. Just the whole, you know, the whole, the whole area, fans and everybody. Thanks for clarifying.
It looks great. It looks great over there.
It's worth the drive-through. It's really spectacular. Great work. You know, a lot of this report is focused on Central. We're looking at the structural repair project. This is masonry lentils that we approved already earlier this year. The bid opening is scheduled for February 4. The biggest unknown right now, as Mr. Thompson indicated, are the lentils, which are kind of part, you know, of the masonry structure. That's a metal structure. Right now, we've identified 26 that need replacement. We will see. The rest of the report also focuses on some of the major systems at Central. Replacement of a boiler tube, condensation tank and pump at Central, and a hot water tank. Those might not sound very glamorous, but for a vintage building, they become important, especially when some of that HVAC is boiler-driven and over 70 years old. So it does be, you know, spotlight the continued maintenance that we have to do. And then finally, we're purchasing a new district pickup truck. And I know there's some pickup truck fans in this group. We're going with a Ford F250, which I used to have to drive in a different life when I was doing a job. I, we were replacing our 1997 Dodge Ram truck. So we have gotten quite a bit of life out of that Dodge Ram. So, any, any questions for me or Mr. Thompson?
I have done. His, his report was very thorough. Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Thank you, Mr. Thompson.
Of course.
All right. Next, we have the capital project expenditure and inter-fund transfer summaries. Thank you to Ms. Croy for that information. Are any questions for her? Okay. All right. Then I just going into closed session. Do I have a motion to enter into closed session to confidentially discuss the appointment, employment compensation, discipline, performance, or dismissal of specific employees of the public body or legal counsel for the public body, including hearing testimony on a complaint lodged against an employee of the public body or against legal counsel for the public body to determine its validity under ILCS 120/2C1, collective negotiating matters between the public body and its employees or, or their representatives, or deliberations concerning salary schedules for one or more classes of employees under Chapter 5 ILCS 120/2C2. Litigation when in action against affecting or on behalf of the particular public body has been filed and is pending before a court or administrative tribunal, or when the public body finds that an action is probable or imminent, in which case the basis for the finding shall be recorded and entered into the minutes of the closed session meeting under Chapter 5 of the ILCS 120/2C11.
I'll make that motion.
Second. All right. It's been, was it Mr. Lewandowski?
Yes.
Okay. And it was second by Dr. Shaw. Roll call.
Bickus?
Yes.
Lewandowski?
Yes.
Ives?
Yeah.
Johnson?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Lopez-Keneva?
Yes. Now, would you mind having, would you like to have like a five-minute break to stretch out?
Then we just need, let's see. Let's see. Let's see, alright. I just need a motion to approve the sicko tax settlement as presented. Now this one already is amended, right Dr. McBride? The one we're approving?
It, it, it is amended. Section 11 is highlighted to, to show that that would be the section that would be removed.
Removed, removed. Okay. Alright, just need a motion for that.
I move that we accept the sicko agreement excluding section 11.
Yep, that's the right way.
Say again?
That's the right way to do it, yep.
Alright, so it was a motion by Ms. Johnson and seconded by Ms. Vickers? Is that right? Okay. Roll call.
Johnson?
Yes.
Vickers?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Lewandowski?
Yes.
Albs?
Yeah.
Lopez-Kleber?
Yes. Okay, announcements. Alright, I just have one announcement if, um, if the board members can give me Dr. McBride's evaluations by February 12th, that's okay?
That's perfect.
You already have mine, is that correct?
Yes, thank you Mr. Lewandowski.
Okay.
Alright. And then I see, is there any, okay, and then I guess there's a statement of economic interest. You'll receive something in the email in February with filing instructions. And they're due May 1st.
Okay.
Can I be reminded by email or text message? Otherwise I don't usually look at those.
Yeah, we will keep, we will bug you.
Alright, that's fine.
It's one of those things, you have to, you have to file it yourselves.
I understand, I can do that.
We will totally remind.
Thank you.
Anything else Dr. McBride?
That, that is it. That is, uh, we got Black History Month, uh, coming up. That's exciting, but that is the, uh, thanks everybody for your endurance tonight and your, you know, lot of good work, uh, done tonight. So thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for everything. I know it was a lot. Okay, just need a motion to adjourn the regular meeting.
I'll make that motion.
I second.
Thanks Luanne. You're the best.
Yeah.
Alright. Okay, I guess it's all in favor, right?
Aye.
Aye.
Alright, meeting ends at 10:15. Drive safe Dr. McBride, Veronica.
Yeah.
And Kathy, please drive safe.
Thanks everyone, have a great night.